To a new form number to align with changes we've made via forms. And we are updating the location of the forms from the district website to the district hub. And we are updating and revising that language in the policy to reflect those changes. And those are the changes we are making to policy 2.37.
Any questions, board members? Mrs. Andrews?
Could you explain to me, number one, where it says the superintendent may provide for appropriate summer school programs? Can you, can you explain what that means in that, in that little number one statement?
So our, that first statement is that the programs, the academic programming that we provide over the summer, and this is not a change, but the academic programming that we provide over the summer is planned out and provided to executive cabinet and to our superintendent for approval.
Any other comments, board members? All right, Mrs. Superintendent, I guess we're on to the next. Thank you, Ms. Fetterman.
Thank you. So policy 2.40, as Dr. Sheffield explained, does require some more extensive changes. In order to provide a guideline, we wanted to show for each section in red, you will see where we have the different changes. So for section three, we are proposing adding some specific form numbers. And you can see the two different form numbers, the, both the numbers and the titles. So you can see which forms that we are adding in those specific pieces. And you can see where we're also adding those in the red line section of the policy that is attached. We are also proposing in that specific section, a revision. Previously, we had required only of out of country travel. We had required trip cancellation or interruption insurance. We are now requiring that same insurance anytime there is travel outside of Palm Beach County. For section four, we are required, we are proposing the addition of a new form, which is a medical disclosure and acknowledgement form for parents to provide for their, for their students regarding administering of any medication that might be needed. For revisions, we are updating the chaperone process to align with policy 2.53. This is, there are several points in there I just want to make sure to point out. We want to make sure that there is clearance of all chaperones prior to the trip pursuant to all district procedures and policies. We also want to ensure that chaperones are not to be left alone with students except where the supervision by district employees is impracticable. So if it's not, it's not practical by policy or by process, then, then that's okay. A chaperone may not be left alone with a single student unless the chaperone is the parent or guardian of the student. And in the case of an overnight field trip, no chaperone shall share a room with a student or students unless the chaperone is the parent or guardian of such students. And then just some additional revisions is deleting references to old technology. And then reflect current process, which is a tweak we made in 4D, which again, you can see in that red line version.
Any questions? This is Whitfield and Mrs. Andrews and Ms. Burrell.
I just wanted to ask about the insurance, the additional insurance. How much does that cost approximately for a student to go out of Palm Beach County?
We would have to obtain that information for you. I, I wouldn't have any of that cost.
Okay. I just don't want it to be hindrance for children to be able to go on trips. So that's, that's the only concern that I have. Thanks.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I like the changes here. Just want to ask just some clarification for the chaperones. Will there be some training for them? I know we've had some incidents before with chaperones and trips. So I just wondered, once we put this in place and schools begin to have these different functions, what kind of training will the school have with the people who actually volunteer to be a chaperone? Before, you know, they're accepted, how will this flow?
Go ahead. When policies are changed, especially specifically for student progression plan, for example, when, when there are changes to policies, we make sure to provide professional development or training to principals or whichever employee groups those changes to policy affect. So we can make sure who's ever affected understands what those changes entail. So if there are changes to these different pieces, then we will make sure to communicate that with principals, who in turn can communicate that with the chaperones.
And just a follow up.
Follow?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen some of these forms in a while. So are there sign offs for the region superintendents on, on these forms that we're talking about, many of these forms?
I will have to pull those forms.
For your field trips, regional superintendents, area office, excuse me, regional offices, principal supervisor have always had to sign off on those field trips that are out of county. And there is a training that, as Ms. Fetterman alluded to, they have always been a training for our chaperones and those that are participating in our field trips. But we do have principals meeting that is scheduled for next week, Thursday. Thursday with principals and assistant principals who are on Friday, where we were talking about closing out the upcoming school year, excuse me, closing out this school year and starting anew. And we do have in terms of preparing for the upcoming school year, and we'll make certain that this is an agenda item as it is something that will be in effect at the beginning of this upcoming year. So as they are planning to your appointment, Ms. Andrews, those trainings and so forth are set for the campuses.
Ms. Burrell? Thank you. So Mrs. Whitfield and I are on the same page when it comes to the trip cancellation insurance. And I know that this is probably an outgrowth for what, of what we went through when trips were canceled because of COVID and parents couldn't get back their money. And, you know, it was, it was very messy. I am worried, I'd like to know approximately, you know, what it would cost. Because I know when I travel, you know, it's outside the country, but you know, we get, it's not cheap. And then I'm wondering, and I don't know, this may be not possible, but, you know, is it possible that when a trip is arranged, that in the contract, there could be something that if there was some type of event, I don't know how legally you would word it, that the parents would receive a, you know, if the trip had to be canceled, they would receive a refund. I'm just trying to find another mechanism other than the insurance, if it could be contracted in there. Because I do think we need to protect the families. And I don't know if I'm just dreaming that, you know, we can put that in there. But I think that we, you know, we need to, A, look at the cost. And if the cost is going to be a burden, then B, is there language, legal language that could be provided? We don't expect a national, a, a national disaster or hurricane or, but, you know, God forbid, or a pandemic. Now, we have a new word to add to our emergencies. I'd like to see that before we agree to put this into the policy.
Mrs. Burrell, we can explore that. As you might imagine, over the last year, as you referenced to, we did have a number of providers, a number of different vendors who we tried to get refunds from, and they gave us quite a hard time on it. And, and most of the contracts do have provisions for certain things that might happen, that you would get your money back. But as you can also imagine, a lot of them fought us tooth and nail when we sought refunds on behalf of our parents. So we'll see what, what can be done.
I have a question. The, the cost of the insurance, I'm concerned that, how it's structured. I mean, is it part of the, is it factored into the cost and it's divided by the number of children that are going? Or is it each child going to have to come up? I want to make sure that children that can't afford to pay don't get precluded from going on the trip because they couldn't afford the insurance. So is the insurance built into the cost? So each child is said the cost to go on this trip is $240, and that's going to include insurance and everything? Or is each family going to have to go out and find their own insurance or, or pay the premium on it themselves? And maybe it's the same, same result either way. But I just want to make sure that, you know, that we don't have, you know, children that can't afford to pay the insurance or, or sitting in the classroom because the other kids could pay it.
Dr. Sheffield, is it unreasonable for us to do the research on that piece and bring it back to the board at a later date? Can we, do you have time for that?
We will bring, we could bring that back.
Okay, let's get that. I mean, that's a very valid concern because we don't want to exclude any children. And so whatever mechanism we can come up with to determine to get the insurance coverage cost at the lowest possible cost and not exclude kids. If we can figure out that information and share it with the board prior to them making the final decision.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Okay, so let me start here. Are field trip arrangements for out of county travel or out of state travel or out of country travel made through pre-approved travel agents?
So they can be, and they often are.
Okay, but they don't have to be.
We're going to get to that in a, is it upcoming policy, policy piece, yes.
Okay, so then let's see if we're going to get to this in the upcoming one too. So just to, to kind of follow up on some of these comments. So it's almost like that would be a good problem to have. I'm trying to figure out how to get students in some of the most challenging schools to be able to go to local field trips. Like, so the, a $250 field trip would be like, wow, that, that, that's a great problem to have. I can't figure out how to get them to be able to go on the $10 field trips, right? And so I'm hoping that since, I'm, I'm glad to see field trips come before us. I hope we have a much more expansive conversation on how to make sure that children who might not have the luxury of a family membership to the science museum also get to go to the science museum a couple of times during the school year in support of their instructional program because it has to be aligned, I'm clear about that. And then I don't know if it's going to come up, but how we prevent children from being denied going on the field trips, even the little field trips, because they're not going on the little field trips, right? Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews, I think I saw your hand.
Just getting chaperones have always been an issue. And when I see this piece, I like it that they would not be left alone with a, a single student unless it's a parent or a guardian. I just know in past years, and maybe it's different now, that trying to get enough chaperones to go on these trips, and you have a bus, and you know, you have your teachers, and it may not be the parents, depending on where these schools are located or whatever they're doing. This piece right here may be very difficult. So I mean, this is new language here. I like that we're trying to keep children safe. But in able, in order to do this, you're going to have to get a whole lot of volunteers to be able to go on field trips now with this language here. Have you all thought about that, or you don't see that being a problem?
Yes, we thought about it, Ms. Andrews. But in regards to, you know, I don't know legal want to speak to it. But when we look in terms of the legality and making certain that we were, of course, protecting our students and their families, that this is going to be our best recourse.
That, that's correct. We, we did look at that. And that's something we actually debated quite a bit as we were meeting about this policy. And we felt like this was the best course forward on it. In recent memory, I don't think we've had an issue where a student was abused because of a chaperone being left alone with them. However, it's best practice in a number of different organizations that I've, I've seen never to, to have a, an adult be alone with children, so.
And just to follow up, because I do like this, but we have to kind of step up a little bit so that when we're in certain populations where we don't have enough, that we have to do a better job with recruiting some of the parents and families to go on these trips so that we won't not be able to have these children be able to attend some of the trips that we have prepared.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Dr. Sheffield and Ms. Fetterman.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
So for section five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought you weren't done with this, this one. Okay, go ahead.
For section five, we do have an acknowledgement, an additional form that we have in here for parents to provide. For section seven, and this is the one, Dr. Robinson, which I added. So for different field trips, we sometimes write, have school employees that organize different field trips, could be through different organizations, although may not always be through different organizations. However, if they are acting as individuals and not as school employees, they cannot recruit on district properties or on district sponsored events, during district sponsored events. So that is a clarified restriction. And so it is in this section also that we, we clarify, Dr. Robinson, about the specific question that you asked about different organizations and sponsoring those, using different organizations in order to organize our field trips and to use our field trips, be it local or out of state or out of country. Section.
I'm sorry, I really don't understand how you, that answered my question. So tell me again, and I'll focus better.
I'm sorry. So for section, section seven, section seven speaks to the question, and maybe I misunderstood, so I apologize. Whether or not we could use, schools use different organizations in order to speak specifically to helping them organize field trips and helping, using those organizations to organize field trips. And that is, that specific question is where we speak to in section seven, where we, it is, it is recommended that our schools use our district approved vendors and pieces in order to organ, district approved vendors to organize those specific sections. It is not a change that we made, which is why it's not specifically delineated on the slide because it's not a change, but it is in section seven, which is why I said that we, it is spoken to in section seven.
Okay, so I really don't see it in section seven. So like, what, you want to read the words to me to tell me that? Because I'm looking at the wrong policy or something.
Dr. Robinson, could you restate the question? Can you, can you restate the question, please?
Okay, I think the question that she's answering is whether or not you have to use district approved vendors as travel agents. Or like, can you just go on kayak and do it yourself?
You should be using, schools should be using district approved vendors.
Okay.
To answer that question. And I think this particular section here is that many times we have these promoters that are sponsoring, a good one would be these senior field trips or what have you. And they solicit our students to be the promoters and the leaders on their campuses. And sometimes it's affiliated. Students then begin, parents begin to think that it's affiliated with the school, and actually it is not. So this is going to say that those individuals for those agencies or the students should not be promoting this, you know, these senior activities or senior events on our campuses because that's a good one, because they are not school sponsored events and should not be affiliated, should not affiliate the school names with it neither. And I think that we have dealt with that this year. So this is where that particular event or issue that we dealt with would have covered here, saying that we do not support and it's not within district policy.
Thank you, Dr. Sheffield.
Good, Dr. Robinson.
Okay, so I understand that. I mean, my children participated in such activities, right? But I think I'm asking a different question.
So what's the question?
And so, okay, so my question is, if, if I'm a teacher and I'm arranging a field trip to somewhere, I don't know, I, we're going on a college tour, right? And we're going to Howard, of course, that's where we're going, right? So do I need to, do I have to make arrangements through a district approved travel agent? Or can I do it separately? Like either through a travel agent I know, or I just go on whatever website? I mean, because, all I'm saying is, if, if we're saying they should use a district approved travel agent, then I don't see that in the policy. That's really my point.
Okay, the travel agency, the district does not, we're, for trips such as that, they will go and schedule those college tours. But when it comes to transportation and, and so forth, yes, they should be utilizing a district approved vendor that's providing the transportation for that college tour per se.
So I'm just ask legal to, to look at that little piece. Because I, like, I don't see it in there, and I could be easily overlooking it. And in which case you guys can tell me it's online so and so, but, I, you know. And I'm, and I'm imagining legal would say that people have to be district approved vendors. But if, let me just take it to the net, if we're going to take a, a plane, can I make auto arrangements online myself? Or does, do we need to go through a district approved vendor and then make sure that insurance is paid and all that? I'm, I don't need to have more conversation about it now. I, but I would like legal to look at that. And if I'm just missing it, you can pull me aside and tell me. Thank you.
We'll review it, Dr. Robinson.
I, I have two questions, following up on Dr. Robinson. So the field trip to go to goes to Washington DC. If my daughter or son were going on that trip, and, and it was arranged to go on Amtrak, and I decided that I want to fly them there on Delta Airlines, that we have to get approval from the district that Delta is an authorized vendor to tra, transport a child on that trip to Washington DC?
So your, if, if, if your granddaughter is going on a district sponsored field trip, she should be traveling with the school on that field trip. She's not allowed, her parent is not going to be allowed to decide her venue, her method of transportation.
Okay.
Because at that point, she's not part, she's not part of the, we're not going to be responsible for her.
Even if she was going to meet up with the group?
No.
Okay, got it. My other question is, I think you said, Dr. Robinson, is, are the students that are, can the students be considered organizers in that first paragraph on line 196? If they're on the campus saying, hey, guys, why don't we all go on this trip that, you know, that, you know, are they organizers?
We're not considering them to be organizers. They are, they're violating our policy. They should not be promoting those outside, those outside agencies, you know, for the spring break trips or for the senior trip over to the Bahamas or to the Dominican Republic, or, you know, or what have you. It's not a district sponsored trip. And then you will have their, you will have a sponsor, a, a district adult sponsor on your campus if it was a district sponsored trip with a approved field trip packet prior to you even advertising this trip.
Okay, so I, I guess, maybe we're beating a dead horse here, I don't know. But if you have, you have a non-district sponsored trip, and the kids in high school, let's say the seniors all decide, you know, they're talking to each other, let's go on this trip. My mom and dad put together this, you know, this vendor that'll take us all. Are the kids violating the policy by just talking about it on campus? Because that seems to say what this is. They are organizers at that point, and they must advise everybody else in writing. So these kids got to put in writing that this is non, this is a non-district sponsored trip. Otherwise, it appears as though they're violating the first paragraph of section seven.
So I'm looking at section seven where it says chaperones and organizers of the trips and by the groups of students, the students are on the trip. So it's the chaperones and organizers planning to, to travel must advise the parents and guardians in, in writing that the travel is neither authorized nor sponsored by the trip.
Okay, so the students are not the organizers, even if they're on campus talking about this, they're not organizers under this policy.
That's correct. It's the chaperones, it's the chaperones and organizers of trips.
Okay, got it. Mrs. Andrews?
Just one more, and it's just bothering me, so just help me out. When the students, especially, not this year since we've had COVID, but the graduates, you know, the seniors that go to Disney World or Grad Night and mini buses. And once you get there, you know, you kind of own your own. So, you know, does this apply to them in the sense that somebody has to be with them? How does that work in this policy? When they're actually moving around these big amusement parks?
That does not impact, Ms. Andrews, because with Grad Bash, they still will travel with their chaperone. And they still will have their hourly or two hourly check in, where the chaperones are still responsible, you know, for the students, because it is a district sponsored field trip. So nothing will, will be different from Grad Bash with this policy.
So they can just go wherever they want and just check in in the two hour thing? Is that what you're saying? That's the, that's the rule here?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Superintendent?
Is your team done?
Just the last six minutes. We updated the form, the location of the forms to the district hub from the district website. And then there we have our new dates. And now, yes, sir.
Now you're done? Okay. Sorry for trying that twice. Third time's success. Mrs. Superintendent, you can move on to the next one if you'd like.
Yes, please, if I could have Ms. Claudia Shade come forward for policy 2.53, Stacy Oak and John Bell, please. Thank you, Dr. Sheffield and team.
Hello, Dr. Fanoi, Chairman Barbieri, Vice Chair Burrell, and all the board members. So today we are talking about a related policy. It just made sense to do the volunteer policy at the same time as the two previous policies that you just discussed. So let me introduce Stacy Oak to you. She's a valued member of my team. Stacy is the district's sole district volunteer coordinator. So what that means is that Stacy works with the 200 volunteers throughout our 179 schools. And so she and I worked on this together. And John Bell, thank you, and Legal for your expertise. And so hopefully we'll be answering all of your questions. One quick fun fact I want to share with you before I get started, if it's okay. Stacy always reminds me whenever she asks me for something that she can do for the volunteer coordinators. And I say, why do you want to spend money for this? And she'll say, the volunteer coordinators devoted, not this past year because of COVID really curtailed this, but in the previous year, and it's pretty much the way it always is, 430,000 volunteer hours, which is valued at about $12 million. And so that's her answer. They do this at the good, out of the goodness of their heart, and they just make such an impact on this district. Okay, so moving on. This is 2.53 volunteers in public schools. So the purpose of this policy is to maintain a framework which encourages volunteer engagement opportunities on campuses and throughout the district. Now, the revisions are pretty much fairly simple. We made revisions just to add clarity to the po, the policy. So the revisions will further ensure the safety and security protocol is uniformly followed by adding clarity regarding the volunteer in public schools program. Everyone knows it as VIPS, they call it the VIPS program. Background screening equipment and procedures, oversight of screening equipment, responsibilities of volunteer coordinators and principals, and then the orientation and training of prospective community volunteers. Okay, so the revisions that we made, addition of language clarifying the role, responsibilities and opportunities of a school volunteer through the district volunteer in public schools program. Basically, that's the do's and the don'ts. We really spell it out there. Addition of language identifying the Raptor visitor management system. So Raptor is what we use, Raptor is what we've used for years, but it was never named in the policy, but now we're including that. As the school safety software utilized uniformly on all district campuses to conduct background screenings as mandated by Florida statute 943.04351. With that policy is, is that's the one that screens for registered sexual predators and sexual offenders. So by state law, any teacher or any volunteer or anyone who works at a daycare, anyone with children, has to be screened. You may be wondering, what do you use for identification? So we want to be very inclusive with our volunteer opportunities. And so any government ID works. So it could be a driver's license, it could be a passport, but it can also be your government identification from another country. And Stacy has seen that quite a bit. And so we, we screen people, but we want to make sure there are no barriers. We want to be very inclusive. Addition of guidance identifying school police as a department that conducts annual checks to ensure that the Raptor visitor management system is functioning properly. And then IT as the department which resolves maintenance issues. So you may be wondering, well, what if a Raptor system breaks down? Are we just going to let people come in and not be screened? No, there are actually backups. So we, we are all set. If one breaks, while it's being repaired, we just put another one in place. Addition of language clarifying the responsibilities of school-based volunteer coordinators and principals. The principal of each school is responsible for ensuring that the volunteer coordinator is actually conducting the background screening utilizing Raptor system. That, that means every time a volunteer comes in, they have to be screened. And it really is just a quick swipe. So we just have to make sure that that's happening. And the principal is also responsible for ensuring that the volunteer coordinators complete their mandatory annual training through the district's e-learning system. That sounds like a heavy lift for principals, but it's really not. Because Stacy's on the phone with the volunteer coordinators every single day. And she has a list, and she can see who has taken the training. And in years past, we have had numerous people not taking the training annually. And so this is really an effort just to make sure that that happens. And Stacy's really the one who looks at the list and says, you know, so and so at whatever school, you haven't taken your training this year. And they'll say, oh, okay, Stacy actually put together the training. So she's well versed in that area. Addition of language identifying the volunteer coordinators as the individual responsible for providing orientation and training to prospective volunteers and performing, and informing school staff of volunteer guidelines as laid out in the district's e-learning center. So basically, all we're doing here is not making any sweeping changes, but we're just really adding clarity. Because I will tell you that over the past year, we had the problems with the training not taking place. And then we had a couple of situations where Raptor machines were broken or not being used or, I think two were missing. And now all of that has been updated. We're in 100% compliance with all the volunteers and their training. Thank you, Stacy, for doing that. And school police has been working with us in IT, making sure that all the Raptor systems are tip top. And that's awesome, because in the new school year, we hope to welcome back all of our school-based volunteers. And in a nutshell, that's it. But Stacy is here to answer any. And in a nutshell, that's it. But Stacy is here to answer any uh specific questions you may be having about volunteers in our schools or anything related.
Questions? Mrs. Andrews?
This is just a comment. We love the volunteers.
Yes, we do.
They truly make a difference, and I thank you for that work. And I just hope that you will continue recruiting and getting them from everywhere, because after we get out of this COVID, which we're almost there, that we need more volunteers to help our children. So thank you.
We heard you loud and clear earlier that we definitely need to recruit a lot more volunteers in specific areas, and so we will certainly do that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So I am very fortunate that I live in an area where a lot of my seniors, as Mr. Tierney knows, have been wanting to step up and volunteer in the schools and help tutor. I have a lot, a lot of retired teachers that want to help out. So what, this is a procedural question, because I am getting calls and I'm expecting a lot more. When they come to me wanting to volunteer, in the past, I used to say, we'll go speak to the school nearest to you. What is the proper procedure? Is that the procedure that I should be telling them to do, to follow?
Are they current students?
No, no, these are retirees that live in District Three that want to go into the schools and help the students.
Yes, Stacy, you want to explain the process?
Yeah, first, um, the first thing they should do, you are telling them the correct thing. They should go to the school that they want to volunteer in and ask to speak to the volunteer coordinator. If they have problems there, if they're not getting results as they want, then they should call me. Um, but yes, they go right into the school, they get their, they fill out the application on VIPS, which takes no more than five, 10 minutes. And they get their IDs scanned through Raptor, and they set it up with the coordinator, and they're good to go.
Any other questions? Good, Mrs. McQuinn, then Dr. Robinson.
Actually, just a comment. Um, it seems to me that this system makes it easier to manage keeping track of the volunteer hours.
That's what Stacy does too, in the VIPS system itself, when they screen in. Yeah, it does.
Right, thank you.
That's how we know that it's 430,000 for that one year.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Um. I'm, so I'm going to request something, a written document from Legal to help me understand this. So this statute 943.04351 is not the Jessica Lance Lunsford Act?
No.
That is correct.
Okay, and so I'm just, right now, I thought the um prohibitions were the same for volunteers and people who will work. I don't need to get into it now. But if you just send me something, or send us something that says, under this statute, these, this applies to volunteers, and it sounds like it's just um past sexual crimes that are prohibited. But under Jessica Lunsford, this applies to da-da-da-da-da, and all these other things would be a strikeout.
I, I can do that, uh, Dr. Robinson. In fact, I've already written that memo, and I'll just forward it to you.
Thank you.
To all of us. To all of us.
I'm sorry?
To all of us.
To all of us, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
We'll forward it to the, to the board.
Ms. Ayala?
Thank you. Question. Um, in the past, were volunteer coordinators folks that were not staff?
Volunteer coordinators are staff and non-staff, so it's a mixture of the two. Would you say most are staff? Um, it varies. Every year changes for your volunteer coordinator. Um, I happened to be a volunteer coordinator for eight years at Indian Ridge School. Um, but some schools use parent volunteers, um, because the teachers are just way too busy to do it, and, you know. So it can fluctuate. I, I can't give you a number, because it can fluctuate at any given time.
Can I get a follow-up, please? Well, what are the qualifications and the entry point for those non-staff volunteer coordinators to make sure they're good to go, prepared?
They have to do the same exact thing that, um, they have to take the training. Um, they can't take it on a district computer. Um, some schools, though, if the volunteer coordinator is is so prominent on their campus, they do get a, an email address, so they can take it then. But otherwise, I give them, I send them the training, you know, through the email. And then they have to send me back the answers um to make sure everything is good. And then they go in and they go, you know, they fill out the application and they get scanned as well. So it's the same thing that um an employee has to do.
Great, thank you. One more. Uh, the PTAs, I'm hearing some discrepancy school by school on what their involvement can be for volunteering. Could you talk about their involvement and their role in this?
Well, sometimes the PTA president or somebody else on the PTA can be a volunteer coordinator.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's whoever the school um picks, or if they go and say that they want. I had a, an example. Somebody is going, they're leaving an elementary school and they're going to a middle school. And they want to continue on as being the volunteer coordinator. So it was lucky for her, I spoke to the principal, and there was a teacher in that position in the middle school. So the teacher was very happy to hang up her hat and pass it on.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to understand to make sure that if the PTA wants to volunteer and be involved, they have a pathway, but no one stepping on each other's toes.
Oh, no, not at all. No, no.
Okay, thank you.
One other point, uh, before we leave. You guys were asking earlier about the training for chaperones. And so the chaperones have to go through the volunteer training before they can even chaperon. And so that's the, the e-learning video that Stacy put together.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. This is a subject I really like, but I would like to see some data, maybe for the board. Because I would like to see how many volunteers we have in each school across the district, because that will help us to know whether we need to help you with recruiting. We're on the ground in our neighborhoods. And so I would just like to see those numbers, because some, some places, I'm sure that when you talk about the hours and the numbers, some are doing better than others because of the location and the people who are available to do it. But when we look at it and we see some that are not, then we can work with our churches and our community to help do that recruiting piece. So I would like to see some data as to how it shakes up throughout the district with volunteers. That's something I would like to see.
Love it. That's a great idea. We'll get that to you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Are you through before I interrupt you?
Okay, so we have four more sections that we need to. We're good, we're good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, if I could have Mr. Burke and Heather Canus and Leanne come forward to go over FY22 next budget workshop. Oh, I didn't realize Keith and Glenda will also be coming forward.
Yes, we, good afternoon.
It's a group effort today.
Today's workshop features an all-star cast of staff members. Yeah, normally this time of year, people may run from us when we often talk about the budget. Uh, but Keith and Glenda are brave and actually ran to us to help us out with uh developing our plans. Uh, the budget is closely aligned with the student academic support plan. So they're going to help us out today and make sure we uh address any questions the board may have. All right, well, and also, uh, we've got, of course, uh, Ms. Canust and Ms. Evans are here. They've been hard at work balancing both the, the general fund operating budget and the capital projects budget. I'd like to take a few minutes to just talk about the various pots of ESR dollars the school district has received. And as you may recall, there's basically three, there was three big grant awards. Uh, the, the first round was ESR one, uh, that was approved right at the onset of the pandemic. Our share was $33.9 million, and those dollars were all spent, uh, as we operated schools over this past year. And then in December of 2020, uh, the federal government approved ESR two, which was a larger sum of money. Our, our share is going to be 153.9 million. And a lot of our conversation today is going to focus on those ESR two dollars. Um, and we, we need to uh, to get to work spending some of those funds. And then the, the big one, it was ESR three, which was the American Rescue Plan approved this past March. And those funds are going to help carry us for the next three years, uh, and extend all the way out to FY24. So this slide just gives you a little timeline and, and how the funds may fall into the different fiscal years. And again, today's focus is really going to be kind of on ESR two. Uh, because as Ms. Andrews mentioned earlier, the governor, governor has signed off on the state budget for next year. That budget included the education budget. It also included the authorization to use these federal dollars. And our legislature, while the federal government did not really have any reservations on the funds or set-asides on ESR two, uh, our state did in fact layer in some additional requirements. And so I'm going to talk about those a little bit more in detail. Uh, it's, it's not real bad news. Most of it aligns with what we would, probably would have wanted to do anyway. Uh, just to kind of back up, the allowable uses of ESR. Uh, we've, we've got a pretty broad range on how to use these dollars, but, you know, uh, the focus is, you'll, you know, is on basically preparing schools to either reopen during the pandemic, to operate during the pandemic, to address the, the lost learning or unfinished learning or accelerated learning. There's I'm using those terms like interchangeably now, because they all kind of mean the same thing, that, you know, get more services to the kids to try to uh catch up or accelerate or just recover. And then there's also provisions that you can use the money uh for facility items like improving the air quality and ventilation. Uh, so and then this, we just kind of include this list as a, this is the federal guidance. This is the 15 allowable uses, and we just kind of included this as a reference. I think you've seen this before. Uh, we highlighted some of the, the ones that we think are going to play out here in our district. But uh, anyway, this is the official guidance. All right, so this is getting into ESR two a little bit more, what happened during the legislative session. It was kind of interesting, you know, there was some debate in the legislature whether these monies should have even been provided, or, you know, how they might be used. Uh, but at the end of the day, the legislature, uh, they did incorporate most of this money into their budget. Um, they saw fit to do what they're calling an ESR two advance. So they looked at school districts that had spent ESR one. If you had spent more than 55% of ESR one, you qualified for uh, an advance of your ESR two dollars. And our district, since we had spent all of ESR one, we were advanced uh $79 million. Now, 8 million of that will be for charter schools, but our share is 71 million. And that money is immediately available, which is good. And that money we can use to go back all the way to the, to March 2020 if we needed to, uh, to kind of reimburse ourselves for costs that we experienced related to COVID. Um, and so that's a, that's a really good thing. That's going to help us out. The, the downside of that advance is our legislature said you must spend the money by September 1st, this upcoming September 1st, or you risk losing access to those funds. And uh, that may have been a little bit of an overstep by the legislature, because the federal grant award period actually goes out till 23. But for me, it's not really an issue. I think we need to worry about fighting. I think I'd rather just embrace the advance and take them up and just spend the money, and make sure we get access to 100% of it. So we've worked that into our plan. It is kind of a key piece, as you're going to see, as we get more into how we balance the budget, exactly how that played out. But I was kind of thankful for that set aside. Uh, the academic acceleration, the, that's putting 20% of the ESR two money into the learning needs of the kids. And uh, that's going to align, the federal government did do that with ESR three or American Rescue Plan. They also have a 20% set aside for unfinished learning. And that 30.6 million, uh, that's the money that has really improved my friendship with Mr. Oswald and Dr. Sheffield as of late, because it comes at a perfect time. And uh, they've got some plans here that they've been working hard on and getting input to get those dollars into our schools uh for the upcoming school year. And then the technology assistance, that's, that's no problem. 7.7 million, we just ordered 30,000 more student Chromebooks for next year, and that's going to run about 9 million, so we'll have no problem spending that. And then the non-enrollment assistance, the non-enrollment, that's their language, the state's language for find the missing students. And we talked a lot about that at the last workshop. To me, 6.1 million is, is a lot of funds for that effort. We've been doing it uh far cheaper. And we're waiting at this point for FDOE to give us some guidance. And we're hopeful that we can use some of that money, not just to find the students, but help the students once we find them. You know, and provide some services. But we're really a little bit in limbo on that pot of money until we know exactly how far and wide we can spread the dollars. You know, can we get creative? Can we provide some mental health services or whatever the kids may need to, to get not just enrolled, but get enrolled and uh, you know, underway with their education. So that piece we're kind of waiting on. And then we've got the balance of our ESR, so we're quickly running through this 153 million. The balance of 38.5 million is going to be subject to, you know, we have to fall within all the federal guidance and allowable uses, and then we also are going to have to get FDOE approval. And we are waiting on FDOE to, to set up that application process and whatever guidance they may have available. So real quick, so the advance I mentioned, 71 million for us. And this is just a letter from Jacob Aliva on May 7th uh that went out to the districts explaining the advance, and we just wanted to highlight, you know, just so you can see it there for yourself, uh, that we've got till September 1st to spend this money. Uh, so this, this got our attention. Again, we were kind of happy to receive it. And uh, we quickly went to work on how to spend it. And uh, I want to take you through that kind of item by item. So we had already had plans, we'd kind of been planning all along for this summer school program that we ramped up, that we would use ESR two dollars. So in total, that could be over $17 million. These are our best estimates at this point. We'll have to adjust once we get through the summer. Uh, but we took that right off the top and said, okay, that'll be, you know, we'll have summer done by September 1st, let's get that paid for. And then our English Language Arts textbook adoption is pretty expensive. And textbook adoptions for the next several years are expected to greatly exceed the state categorical money that we receive. And we've got some big ones with English and math and social studies. So it is a good fit with the ESR dollars. And what we're recommending is that we use the ESR dollars to pay for these textbooks, textbook adoptions. That'll free up some of the state categorical money that we would hold in reserve to help fill the, the gap in subsequent year budgets. Uh, because we've been having some difficult conversations with, with our academic counterparts. When we look at the needs for textbooks over the years, uh, the shortfall could grow as great as $40 million. So this would be a prudent step, I think, to shore up the textbook dollars, and it also goes a long way with the acceleration and the unfinished learning, that if we're going to, we have to provide new textbooks and the professional development that goes along with that.
Mr. Burke, I want to ask a question. One is, I think I've asked before, but don't remember your answer. So instead of getting hard copies, we we try and get electronic copies so the students don't have to carry the books around with them, they can access them? Is that the way we spend that money?
Uh, yes, sir. And this is something the superintendent and I've talked about, because it's, it's kind of intuitively, you kind of scratch your head a little bit, but the way that textbook firms work, it's, because we always think, hey, could we save a bunch of money, we just buy the online edition and forget the hard copy. But you pretty much, you have to buy the hard copy to get the online version. So what, that's what, you, you know, the textbook companies have found a way to basically continue to make their money. And uh, we're not seeing a discount, like, you just don't have that option to say, hey, just, you know, for half the price, can we just have an online edition? You, you end up.
I just, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me that we do that. It doesn't make any sense that they force us to do that. I think we need to contact the legislature and say, this doesn't make sense. We're, you're forcing us to buy books that the kids probably aren't going to use, because they're going to go on their computers, because that's all they do now, right? They do just about everything on their computer, so it's ridiculous for, for us to buy books. Some of those kids, I remember my grandson's backpack weighed like, felt like it weighed 100 pounds with all those big thick books in there, and he can access all that stuff on the computer. So we need to, we need to try and put some pressure on somebody to, to avoid that. The other question is, what's changed in math? That we have to buy new books every, every time? I mean, math is math, right? Adding, subtracting, multiplication, division. Are we going to go to another version of new math that the parents have no clue how to help their kids with? Somebody decided there's a new way to add?
No, I, I've actually shared that sentiment, but uh, the answer is beyond my uh.
Well, we do have the new best standards, the new best standards that are coming.
I'm sorry?
The best standards. We do have some new standards that are coming. State standards.
Okay, so they're going to retell us how to teach math. Okay, got it, okay.
You know, that is, the textbooks, right now, they're, the publishers are kind of bundling their products the, the way they see fit, and that, you know, we have a state, the state adopts the textbooks, so it is uh, I think we, they can match lobbyists with anybody, but we, we could uh, you know, it's something we should probably take up for the next.
Maybe we should hire some people in-house to, to, to prepare the books that the kids need to read, to meet the standards, rather than paying these companies for hard copies that we don't need, but um, something we should probably take a look at. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I thought you were about to go completely into the lane of something that I've talked about before, but you just touched the edge. And that is, can we use this money to pay our teachers to write curriculum? Or to write um little books? How about that? I mean, I, because I know there was one window some years ago where the instructional materials dollars had some flexibility, and then they took that flexibility away. And so I'm wondering if we could just look at that to see if there's a way of using this money to not only put money in, in the pockets of, of some truly outstanding teachers. money to not only put money in, in the pockets of, of some truly outstanding teachers, but also to have some, some lively lessons that students would be able to access, especially like over the summer. But the other thing, I want to push back a little bit. So I do understand the concept of the virtual textbooks, right? But I think part of us, a challenge nowadays is that young people are so much on these devices that, like, their brains are going like this. And I think we would do them a benefit by having some things that we ask them to slow their brain down, down and read the hard copy. So, you know, that's my opinion based on numerous conversations with people who know more than me. But I just don't want to just, just say the, the virtual access to textbooks because I think there's something valuable in, in having children practice reading hard copy. So.
Okay. Well, this, we're actually proposing using some of the ESTR dollars to, to cover the adoption. ESTR dollars, I think, could, if we decided we wanted to develop some curriculum locally, and that was going to be part of our plan to address learning loss, I think that would be an allowable fit. The traditional state categorical dollars for textbooks, I don't think, we'll research that further, but I think that is problematic.
Okay, can I say one more thing?
Okay. So now I'm really going old school on you now. So some people may know what I'm talking about, many will not. But back in the olden days, when I was in school, Mrs. Hoffa had us doing the SRA. Do y'all know what the SRA was?
I does.
See, oh, okay. See, see, it's, okay. So, but the, this is the thing. There were these short reading passages that you would read and then answer the questions, right? She, Ms. Hoffa had us doing this as a reward. Like, I don't know how she got that in our heads, but the thing was is that we were competing. So imagine, I'm making up stuff, but I think it's a good idea. Imagine if we paid teachers to create the Palm Beach version of the SRA, that the children could maybe pick up packages every Monday at school, and they could compete. Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna be trying to beat Karen. I'm gonna try to get more right. I mean, I'm just, let's just think about how we can create some tools that will, will engage students, get them reading despite their, their best intentions to not read, right? And as well as possibly put money in teachers' pockets. I mean, I just, that competition thing, we never, we never really latched on that overall. And so if we can create the consumables, I think we can get a lot, a lot of benefits. So I'll try to quit adding my bright ideas for a few minutes. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. So Mr. Barbieri just piqued my interest on the heavy backpacks. It really was something that drove me crazy when my daughter was in elementary school. So she had this huge backpack. She had to carry it back and forth all the time. It was a lot of workbooks. But since the pandemic and middle school, her backpack's gotten a ton lighter. There's not a lot of stuff in it anymore. Are we moving away from having them carry these big, huge books? Are they just being left in the classroom? Is this just something that's happening to me? I know she does a lot more with, like, online programs, which are great, and I love them. So are we moving away? And are we mandated to buy textbooks? I thought we were. And it sounds like from this conversation that we're not mandated to, that we could get around it.
No, I, we are mandated, and I apologize if I confused that.
Oh, okay. So are we, are we getting away from some of these textbooks?
We are not getting away from it. It could be, it could be to where her teacher is using her classrooms, having them to leave their books in the classroom.
Yeah.
And utilizing the online version at home. Because it is important that I think that students have, because some of our students do need that print to text, meaning that hard copy. So it's all in terms of how the teacher is utilizing it, which is a good strategy.
Well, during all this virtual time, we've had a lot of people not have these books at home anyway, right? I mean, that's been, they haven't had copies of it.
Correct.
And it seems to have been okay.
Seems to be okay, and they're probably going to be like me having to wear the glasses with the contacts now with all the time on the screen. Because really and truly, I mean, all the time that we've spent with the Google meets and on the, on the computer, it's, you know, it's wear and tear on the eyes.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm one of, with those right now.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to know it's a mandate that we have to do it because I would love to kind of get away from this huge expense too, but it seems like the state won't really let us. So, thank you.
And then to Dr. Robinson's point, Mike, I know when she was talking in regards to our being able to utilize teachers to help with, you know, the writing of assessments and so forth. And I do want to share that you do assist us in terms of teaching and learning, because we do have extra dollars to where we do bring in some of our high performing teachers over the summer that assist us with writing our FSQs and our unit assessments. So we do utilize our, many of our teachers within the district over the summer to help with some of those, you know, with writing some of those item banks and so forth. And to field tests, because that's important too.
Okay, well, I'll start moving down the page again. The, the next item, we've had quite a bit of COVID-related health claims. You know, we're self-insured on our health insurance plan. It's at 12.5 million and growing. And we, we could utilize these dollars to, to cover those costs. And that'll help, help shore up the health fund a little bit too, to make sure that we're well positioned for the, the next couple of years. And then you may recall the, the federal government passed a leave requirement where employees could take up to 10 days of leave related to COVID. We've, we've kept that in place throughout this entire year, since it started back in March of 2020. And the, as a public employer, as a school district, we didn't benefit from the tax credits. So that is a cost to the district to provide that leave. It's been significant. We're at 4.2 million. And we would reimburse that through the ESTR two dollars.
Mr. Burke, Ms. Bro has a question for you.
Thank you. I wasn't ready to move on. I had a question and I should have asked.
Oh, sorry about that.
But that's okay. The retention of existing staff, which was on the previous slide. Are we able to use any of these dollars to provide a bonus? You know, we've heard from the media specialists. I've heard from people in food service who've worked through the summer, through the heat with the, you know, the, the meals that people are getting, through, you know, some of the substitute teachers that have been with us through the pandemic. Is there any way that we can take some of those funds? I know the teachers are getting, the governor has said that they're going to get a bonus, but we're hearing from others. Can that be used for that purpose?
So that's a, that's a hot question that's being asked around the state. The governor has said, you know, he, he is doing it through ARP funds, that $1,000 bonus to what the state defines as classroom teachers and school principals. So, you know, we've been through that before with best and brightest, that classroom teacher definition leaves out, media specialist, guidance counselors, all that. So I've been, I'm on a weekly call with, and Ms. Evans and Ms. Canus join me with the finance officers. And everyone's asking about that. Can we, because they're seeing other employee groups that they'd like to potentially recognize with a bonus. We are, at this point, we're still waiting for FDOE to provide that guidance on ESTR two, if that would be something allowable. But I suspect that it will be because, you know, I think even the state's got some limits on hypocrisy, right? So they've got, they've done it. They've done it for principals and teachers. You know, you would think that we would have some flexibility there.
So just as follow-up, I think it would make people feel a lot better to know that we're looking at that because, you know, it's emotionally crushing. I mean, people have worked so hard through this pandemic, nonstop. They're not getting much of a summer break. So I think anything we can do for our employees, if possible, and it's a one-time, you know, it's a one-time bonus. But, you know, even if it's not as much, something would be better for them than nothing.
Right. Yet today, we're trying to get you through the, kind of the, the pots of money and the decisions that we need to make now. But you're going to see there's still going to be some ESTR two dollars at the end of the day that we have not developed a plan for. And then there's, you know, the, the ESTR three ARP dollars that we're still working on. So I talked about health claims and the leave. We did have COVID expenses, like additional PPE and cleaning and all that, that went above the ESTR one money. So we estimate that at 14 million. So that's a chance to go back now and basically reimburse the, the district budget and push, you know, have those costs correctly attributed to the federal dollars. And then that last one was a retention of existing staff. We did not lay off any full-time employees throughout this whole pandemic. And we did have programs that lost revenue and, and suffered as a result, and we kept those staffs and staff in place. So we estimate that we would, about $7 million of these funds would go towards that, which is also kind of in that bucket of reimbursing the district for things that, that we did on our own to be proactive.
Mr. Burke, Mrs. Andrews has a question?
Yes.
Thank you. And I think this is later in the packet, in the slide presentation. But since we had to spend this money by September 1, you know, this is why we're here today. But there are pieces of this whole package of ESTR two and three and the American Rescue Plan where the community, your stakeholders, have to weigh in along with the board members. And so I know we're talking about different things right now, but that's a real critical piece as far as our plan that we probably will have to send to the state too, as to what we want to do. But a lot of that has to do with having that input, that input from our stakeholders. I think that's in here. And I know we're talking about things that we want. But probably what we can get away with right now is certainly the learning loss, you know, the unfinished learning that we're talking about, you know, as it relates to COVID, for this money that we have, for the three years that we have. It's going to be looked at very closely as to how we do this. I sit on the Friday meetings with the Council of Great City Schools, and that's one of the biggest things that we don't want to rush. We want to do it correctly because we are being looked at as to how and which way we're going. It was wonderful that we have a program in place for our students for acceleration. So this is good that we're talking about today. But as we move forward with this big package here, lots of work could be done so that others can have a voice in this.
Yes, I completely agree. And we plan to fully honor those requirements. Again, we were just trying to pull out some of the time-sensitive pieces that, within the ESTR two, that does not face that same, same requirement. Okay, so moving on. All right, so the, that brings us to the ESTR two money that's carved out for academic acceleration. And this is, we've worked with Mr. Oswald and Dr. Sheffield. And, you know, we are breaking this work into phases. And we were in earlier doing phase one, which was the spring school tutorials and the summer program. And now we're ready to move to phase two. So I'm going to turn it over to my academic colleagues at this point and let them take you through what we call the SASB, or the Student Academic Support Plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. And as, as we move into phase two, part one of the Student Academic Support Plan, I think it's going to be important, I do want to remind you just a little bit of phase one, when Mr. Oswald and I came forth a few months ago, and what was that intended purpose. In phase one, you know, that's where we provided those tutorial dollars back in January through June, where the schools received in an allotment. They were providing tutorials and enrichment to identified students and so forth. And right now, currently, we are finalizing the programming for our district's summer academies that's going to run June 28 through July 22. And currently, as I checked this morning, this morning, the team told me that we had read it about 13,500 students that have already been registered, that they will be participating in our various summer academies. And, you know, that's, that's exciting. So what we're going to be doing in the next coming days, Mr. Oswald and myself, which we've been working very closely together with the Student Academic Support Plan, is just finalizing and closing out the phase, the phase one with the summer academies, looking at the numbers, working with the regional offices, site administrators and so forth, and looking at the teachers and making certain that we are fully staffed and we're ready to go for the summer. So we do want to thank you for your support as we navigate it, phase one of the Student Academic Support Plan. For the intended purpose of this conversation, as Mr. Burke has indicated, when we are moving into phase two, and phase two, part one, and of course, part one is around these ESTR two dollars, I am excited, you know, with this particular work because when we started and talking about, you know, what we were going to do with our students and trying to mitigate some of the instructional losses, it was very evident in the conversations that Mr. Oswald and myself, myself was having, was that we didn't just want to buy stuff because we knew all of this money was coming. But what was important to us was that we wanted to make certain that whatever we did, it was going to have a tremendous impact with our adult learners, our teachers. Because if we utilize and make certain that we are enhancing the instructional pedagogy and providing that support for our teachers, what was going to happen? It was going to transfer over to our students. And then the work that we're doing with the ESTR dollars and with phase two, part one, we want to make certain that whatever it is that we're putting into place, and when it's time to, and these dollars are gone, and we're having to pull back some of those resources, the structure continues and the structures remain standing and it remains strong. So that's a little bit of what you're going to hear this afternoon in regards to our intended purpose and our ask. But we know that one thing that we wanted to accomplish with this academic support plan, again, was just to mitigate many of these instructional losses.
I'm sorry, I wasn't going to interrupt you, but Dr., Mrs. Andrews has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the question about the monies that you put into the budgets of the schools for tutoring.
Yes.
And to see if that money is just sitting there. Is it really, are they really having tutoring at these schools? Is it being used? Do you need to get some support in place to help with some of the tutoring? Can you tell me what the status of that money? That was the money that you put in the budgets a while back.
Yes, Ms. Andrews. I'll let Mr. Oswald, I'll turn that over to him since he worked directly with the schools and principal supervisors.
So the schools, some of the dollars are being spent down through tutoring and expanded learning time. However, schools are having a challenging time trying to recruit educators actually, you know, work beyond the regular school day this, this last semester. So we are working with some of those dollars to roll forward, to expand some of the summer learning opportunities that we're doing. So they are rolling that forward for those purposes. In addition, all of our schools, when we get into some more specifics, will receive additional support for next school year when it comes to that expanded tutoring and learning time for next school year.
Go ahead, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. Because I just know too, a lot of the teachers are burned out based on working through the pandemic. And some of our communities have programs that actually enhance the tutoring component. And so I just really hope that we reach out if we find that the money is not being used, this pot of money that we put there, that we figure out how we can get the tutoring going on. We may have to partner with some churches or some community organizations to get them involved because you may not have the teachers that can do all the things that you want to do. You want them to teach summer school, and I know that recruiting piece is going to be very critical. And so then you want them to do tutoring too. And so have you thought about looking at a bigger version of how you do this work so that we may not have all of the human resources right here within the district, that we have to go out and find ways of getting those folks that can really come in and help us out? Have you had that conversation?
Yes. So Dr. Sheffield and I have been talking about, what we're not going to get into today is the Student Academic Support Plan, Phase Two, Part Two. But we, that is on our, our list of priorities around expanding learning time for all schools. And how do we, you know, look, you know, at all the different partnerships that we currently have to help support that? We've also been looking and talking with other districts throughout the country. There's a couple companies or vendors, if you will, that have on-demand tutoring that Dr. Sheffield and I have been kind of vetting out to see if that might be appropriate for something here at the school district where students can basically have 24/7 support when needed, as well as the partnerships here locally. So that is on the list that will come back in Phase Two, Part Two.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So we keep saying tutoring, but I think, can I request that we look at shifting tutoring to homework assistance? Because tutoring is oftentimes disconnected from the lessons that the student had during the school day. And if, I mean, I'm hoping, I expect that teachers are providing some, some homework assignments, and then if the students can get assistance with that, some direct eyeball-to-eyeball assistance with that, it will support what they were taught earlier in the school day instead of a disconnected concept. So I'm just looking for some balance with that in the future.
And, and, Dr. Robinson, to your point, Mr. Oswald and I have met with two companies in regards to just to that, which is homework assistance. And we got excited about it because it will be aligned to what's present at the moment and to the standards and where the students will scan up, you know, their assignments. And they have 24/7 access to that teacher and so forth. So, you know, that's a piece that we're definitely working on, as Mr. Oswald indicate, will be part of the part two, phase two. But we will definitely be more... And we will definitely be more, you know, we'll be willing to talk more in regards to those companies.
And it also depends on the grade level. So if you take a junior or senior year, who, you know, we've talked about for, at long lengths, about the concordant changes for graduation requirements. So those particular students are going to need to be a direct tutoring and support and ongoing around SAT and ACT. And to important, Ms. Andrews, partnering with TakeStock and other mentoring programs around making sure that our students meet that requirement.
Okay. And so as we move on and around the Part 1 of Phase 2, you do have the slides there and the bullets. I'm not going to read the bullets to you for the essence of time. But it is important that I just stress that the goals that we utilized when we met with the team in developing and trying to strategize this academic support plan for over a period of time, it was one, you know, we determined the schools with the highest percentage of students that were going to be in need of additional support. And you're going to see that in a slide or two next, where we're talking about how our schools were tiered and those metrics that we utilized. Because the support that's going to be provided to our schools is going to be based in the tiering of, you know, our schools. Then, of course, you know, we have been continuously talking about how we are going to address the increase of student learning needs due to the impact of COVID. And I'm going to say even though, even prior to COVID, because these gaps were there, but it's just widened with COVID-19. And as I indicated earlier, I continue to stress about building the capacity of our teachers and just making certain that we are very attentive to that and the support that we are providing. And lastly, around the work that we're going to be doing, particularly with our elementary schools around increasing the access of our students and our, excuse me, and to gifted, those gifted screeners, and also into our AMP programs. And then as I move on, and you're going to hear a little bit more, the targeted areas, of course, with Phase 1 is on all three of our levels, our elementary, middle, and high school. For our elementary students, elementary schools, of course, we are targeting our students in our schools with the majority of looking at our free and reduced lunch. And then when we get to middle school, we're looking at literacy and math support for our schools with the graded needs based on free and reduced lunch. And then high school, of course, we are going to, of course, look at those students that are not on track for our graduation with their specific cohort. And then we will be looking at, you know, SAT, ACT cut scores and so forth with the greatest free and reduced lunch, which is a strong indicator. Now, I said earlier in regards to the matrix and us really looking at tiering our schools and having Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, and that will determine these level of support. Mr. Oswald is going to be covering what the support looks like for each tier. But before he goes into talking about the specifics support, whether it's human capital or what have you, I wanted to share with you regards to what the matrix looks like that we utilize in working with, you know, performance accountability, research and eval. You know, Mr. Burke and his team, and I cannot thank Mr. Burke and Ms. Canus enough for their patience with us, because surely this budget was not Mr. Oswald and myself forte. So they gave us a quick lesson. With the matrix, of course, we looked at our students' performance and, you know, their demographics, free and reduced lunch, teacher experience. The percentage of teachers there was zero to three years of experience, right? That was important. Then, as you go over to the box to my right, there we talked about the three tiers of schools, you know, Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, and then all schools receiving support, that's going to be important. Regardless of your Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 schools, all schools in the district will receive support. Their support that you receive, of course, is going to be slightly different based on the tiering that you're in. We know that our Tier 1 schools, our Tier 2 schools are probably the schools that have the greater support, right? Then when we get to Tier 3, you're going to have support, but it may not be as extensive as a Tier 1 or Tier 2 school. And then, again, we're going to provide more.
Can I ask you a question on that before we move? So we have a Tier 3 school, but it has children that are way behind. So they're not going to get the same resources as kids in a Tier 1 school? I'm not talking, I'm talking about child to child, not school to school. So we have kids over here in a Tier 3 school that are at the same level as children in a Tier 1 school. Are those Tier 3 school kids going to get the same resources as those Tier 1 kids?
Well, they will, but in terms of the actual, when you start talking about some of the human capital, which Mr. Oswald will go into in a minute, right now, it's, the answer right now is no, they do not. But we're continuing to have those conversations as we're doing our calculations and trying to figure this all out in regards to where the shifts need to be made. So of course, for the intended purpose of this conversation here, Mr. Barbieri is to gauge the feedback, the kind of feedback that you just provided to us in regards to, if you're wanting us to go back, once you see in regards to what the tiering looks like, to go back and see, can you take some of those additional resources that you have in Tier 1 and Tier 2? What will that look like if we added some, a portion of that to Tier 3? That's something we would need to do.
All right, you know, we've talked about it before, Dr. Robinson has mentioned, sometimes, you know, a school is an A school, but it still has children in that school that are not reading on grade level or whatever. I just want to make sure those kids get the same resources as some other school that might be mostly free and reduced lunch. Those kids deserve the same resources if they're at that low level as the kids in the other schools.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
And we'll get to that in just a minute, Mr. Barbieri, but thank you. Okay, and so at this time, what I'm going to do, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Oswald as he's going to take us through the tiering of, you know, the tiering of schools.
Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. And so we're pretty excited to have this opportunity to support our schools. Ms. McQuinn, you probably have some themes of the AAA plan coming back to life about how we tier support to schools and many others who've been in the district for some time that receive that additional support. And with that in mind, there's a sense of urgency. We are in June, when we're talking about human capital and getting these positions out to schools, when we know our schools that have the biggest lift, and as you said, Mr. Barbieri, we know that there are struggling kids in all schools. We're really targeting the schools where there's a heavier lift than more for right now so that we can provide additional human capital into those schools. And as Dr. Sheffield discussed, we've been doing a lot of research, looking at a lot of different organizations who are publishing papers about, you know, the impacts and what has, COVID has done to our school district and designing this around not only addressing unfinished learning, but at the same time, how do we build that human capital and sustain it over time within this three-year window of time? So also a lot of Richard Elmer's work, who's out of Harvard University, he used to be at Harvard University, around building the internal accountability, so providing that direct instruction. So we're talking about really, at this point, around Tier 1 and 2 schools receiving additional 369 positions. These are, majority of these are teaching positions into our schools, and I'll unpack those at each level. So at the elementary school level, in Tier 1, our Tier 1 schools, there are 34 schools of adding a reading recovery position. So for those who don't know reading recovery, reading recovery, these particular teachers go through a year-long training, really studying the deep levels of the science of reading, working with first-grade students for part of the day. And they're able to take your lowest-performing first graders to get them back on track and on grade level. The other part of the half of their time will be working and doing push-in in small group in first and second grade classrooms, modeling those behaviors that they're learning through their training to other teachers. So we want other teachers and others to benefit from that learning. In addition, in each of these positions, we know it's critical that they have support and that they're doing the right work. So specials to be added at the district level to support and make sure that this work is done with fidelity. Second position is an acceleration position. So, and this would be, the following positions are for all Tier 1 and 2 schools, which there's 56, so a little more than half of our schools in the district would receive an acceleration position to make sure that we have, you know, there's unfinished learning happen to our kids who are also accelerated. So how do we, one, get programs, like the gifted programs that we want to see in every one of our school campuses up and running, AMP programs, and then a position that's providing that direct instruction, but also making sure that we lift that work up at the entire school would also be given to each of those schools? And again, a position here at the district level to ensure that these people are getting the right support, that they're getting, if they're not endorsing, that they're getting endorsement, that ongoing regular support to ensure that if we're doing gifted programs, that's truly that gifted work.
Mr. McQuinn?
Can I add one thing before we start, Ms. McQuinn? I defer to you next. I think it's important for the board to understand, when we looked at my evaluation and we looked at the last strategic plan, right? So in the world that I've functioned for 21 years, you cannot fix third grade unless you fix kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. So our target has always been right, but our actions and our money never, we all put everything in third grade. That, you can't, that's too much as a former third-grade teacher, the reason why I ended up going to middle school. That's a lot to ask of a third-grade teacher to teach pre-K, K1, 2, and third grade, and then be held accountable for that. So our theory of action is put the resources in prior to where we're tested at the state, be very intentional. So I want to thank the team for hearing me out loud and clear when we argued about this about a year ago. Even though third grade is how we're measured, we actually have a moment in time, but we're almost held harmless. So let's put the resources in the people where it needs to happen. And then you'll see the sort of the same theory of action when we get to middle school and high school as well. So it's just important when we think, because our next workshop is the strategic plan, our last strategic plan, we never put the money directly in the buckets. And so one of the beautiful things about seeing this team together is that they're designing it together. And I'll be honest, you Mike talks to me more about academics than anything. That's been our constant conversation. And so I just wanted to take a moment for the community to understand while we're putting our resources at the beginning of the foundational pieces of education, because our results will then occur, and if you think about this from a very practical standpoint, the money lasts for three years. So if we put this money now in K1, 2, guess when the results are going to come out? Right when those tested subjects become a very important part of our life again. So just wanted to put that out for context, Ms. McQuinn, I'm sorry.
I have my question. I didn't, I checked it off already, but I'll come back to it. Thank you, I've talked to Dr. Fanoi, and I think I've said it in some of our Equity workshops. And this is so wonderful that we have three years' worth of money because this is something I asked at the beginning of COVID, what are we doing significantly different? To me, this is something we're doing significantly different, and I'm very excited about that. Now, so along that line, though, and I'll use a perfect example of a teacher who taught second grade reading up until this year. And I can't tell you what it took out of her. There's a special endorsement that you get when you teach the second-grade lowest readers, and I don't remember what that is, but I can tell you that it was very expensive for her because she's taking on that task and having to pay for it herself. And so since we have this limited, but, you know, we have some extra money right now, is there something we can do to encourage teachers monetarily to get that reading endorsement, which is where I'm headed?
That's a great suggestion that we can take back and look at. Yes, there has been changes in legislation, has made it more challenging for who is actually working with our most struggling learners. And that's one of those impacts we can definitely look at, which is a great one. And so the next position is another SAI, so supplemental academic instruction. So to Dr. Fanoi's point, investing in early literacy, this is the person we'd work with in the K2 arena. Again, we've got some fantastic instructional, high-quality instructional materials that are coming to our schools that we've invested in, and we want to get that right. And we have this opportunity to put this additional position to provide direct instruction, again, coming out for regular professional development, where they become an expert at the school, where other teachers can observe and learn and grow from these individuals so that this work is sustainable over time. All teachers need support, the PLC facilitator position, you're going to see this theme in all Tier 1 and 2 schools at middle and high school. So we know the time spent upfront, planning, standards-based, good instruction will pay off when the teacher goes back to the classroom. So working with Ms. Millen's team and, again, providing a position where these people will get trained up, and similar to years ago, we had LTF-type positions, some of you remember that, to ensure that all teachers in the school are getting the support. And as Dr. Sheffield mentioned, we have new standards coming across the board, next year, K2, K12, the following year. So this is an optimal time to leverage these resources to ensure that we get that done right. At the middle school level.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I'm pleased, I'm pleased too, with kind of shifting things here, but I have a few questions. First, refresh me, how many elementary schools do we have?
109.
Okay, and then, so with gifted, so are we, do we have a timeline for universal gifted screening?
That's another workshop? No, just kidding.
Well, I mean, we don't have that right now, today.
We have it today, but we've been working on it.
We'll put it on the sticky for, okay, and then, do teachers that are gifted endorse, get a supplement? Offhand, do we know?
I can't remember.
I don't think so, okay. Okay, so then, I'll save that for the other workshop. But, so reading recovery, yay, I mean, like, yay, right? So why not more? Can we get more? What's the rate limit of factor? Do we know how many reading recovery-trained teachers we have in the district?
There's a lot of regulation when it comes to reading recovery that comes into play. So, one, our district capacity to be able to train this many teachers is going to take some time to get there. We'd have to invest, and it takes a year-long to the district to have a trainer. And at this point, we only have two that are authorized to provide training, and usually those cohorts are about 12 teachers at a time.
And I think, as we talk about reading recovery, I think it's going to be important that we just put it out there that even though we have it here, that it will be a year of training for, you know, for district staff and getting our teachers onboarded for the reading recovery. It's not something that necessarily, that we will see that is actually taking place for, I don't know what year, school year '22, because we will be involved in the training aspect of it.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we cannot, right now, we don't have the capacity to train more than 24 a year? That's how I heard that meant.
Well, there's some teachers, to your point, that are already trained, that have gone through training this year, the past couple of years when we started this back up, that could be doing some of this work. So depending on a school's current capacity, they need to realign and put someone into this position. So in essence, approximately, I got to get with, we'll have to get with the team here at the district to see what the capacity is to train for next year. Again, the urgency of why we want to get this moving forward so schools can plan for it. If we're going to, to Dr. Sheffield's point, go beyond that, we would have to invest a year-long to get another trainer before we see the benefits of another trainer.
Okay, and just to follow up, so just so that I'm crystal clear, each one of these positions are school-embedded, they're not regional office. They, like, they're owned by the school, they're part of the school family?
By the school, and you will, where you have, where there is a specialist per se, for your SAI specialist for K2. So all K2 schools that are Tier 1 and 2 will get that SAI specialist. However, there is, excuse me, an SAI teacher. However, there is, where you see the one specialist, that means that there will be a K2 SAI specialist that's housed in teaching and learning that will be working strictly with these K2 SAI teachers, providing that monthly training and onboarding and support.
Okay, but they're evaluated by the principal?
The teachers are evaluated by the principal. They're a school base. We're only providing the PD.
And so my last question right now, so the acceleration position and the PLC facilitator, will they model instruction?
Oh, absolutely, yes, that's by design.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, it's nice to have the money to do the things that we need to do because we've always known where we needed to start, and that's with the little ones to get to where we need to go. But my question is, are you coordinating with human resources? Because this is the piece that we've got to make sure that we don't end up having all of this wonderful, wonderful process here. And then we have And then we have vacancies at a school and then the teachers can't do what they need to do. So are you coordinating? Do you feel pretty comfortable that, you know, you won't get all of this? And then you have a lacking on the other end because you can't fill the vacancies at the school?
Yep, so we didn't want to too far ahead of the board, and that's why Dr. Fanoi wanted us to get, refer to you all today. But uh, they have, you know, we've had some conversations, but yes, that's why we again, wanted to get through today. So we can get moving and working very closely with HR to, to get this happening and recruiting additional staff.
And I would just add that there is a very keen sense of urgency between HR and um, and uh, deputy superintendent. They brought that to me last week. So that's why this is so important because we have, we must move on this quickly because this will create vacancies in the schools. Uh, and so then that's where most principals are going to naturally hire from their own folks. And then we have to backfill those positions. And so there's a couple of other things that we're gonna, that HR is working on with um, with Mike's team on potentially creating more opportunities for teachers to come to the district. And then obviously um, our recruitment efforts, there seem, there does seem to be a lot of interest in coming and working in Palm Beach County. But we, right now, we don't have the vacancies. But with the board's approval, we will then create all of these vacancies.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
And so these new positions will be um, like centrally evaluated? Like the people who are applying will be centrally um, evaluated or cleared or whatever? And then the principals will choose from their pool or the principals figuring out who fits where?
So this will be owned at the school level? Uh, you know, reading recovery has a little bit uh, nuances to that as far as just their background. But the schools would own the positions. Um, they will be accountable to the district uh, around the expectation that will be outlined with regular reporting. Um, as Dr. Fanoi tells us often, is that we're going to have to be reporting on, you know, what's the ROI on this work, right? So when we look at the reading recovery teachers, we're going to have specific measurables to see how many, you know, first grade students went back to grade level. Uh, what's the impact of that's having in the classroom, what kids that they're working with? So there's going to be a lot of accountability to these positions that the schools are going to have to, to understand.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think it's also important for the board to know, we had a great meeting last Friday in the Glades. And HR and um, our folks at Tri-Cities up in the lane had put together a job fair in the Glades a year ago. And so when this topic came up on Friday, they're like, hey, we, we would be glad to do that. Cause they were telling us they could maybe potentially recruit teachers from Cluiston and different areas around the lake. So I think between the HR team and others, there's opportunities for job fairs. And once we get all this stuff finalized, to really be, make a concerted effort to try to recruit people to fill those positions.
But Dr. Robinson, I think too, um, I think what Ms. Oswalt was getting ready to say is that along with this and, and as we were talking about our, the plan, um, we're, the team right now, we're also in conjunction with this, working on a guide. Um, in regards to what the specifics and um, what are the expectations? Um, and the negotiables and the non-negotiables around all of this. To where, and if you will, it would take me to thinking back around that AAA guidebook, right? Um, in regards to what were those expectations and what we held tight? So we are working on, we're working with that as well.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
So I just want to ask that we consider um, some additional um, eyes and ears in the selection process, right? Whether it's, I personally think it should be a central pool, but you know, I, I get the district's culture. But at least the principal supervisor needs to be involved in that. Because we, we have a lot of principals that are relatively new as principals, right? And, and there is something to be said for experience, I don't care what field you're talking about, right? But just that ability to discern who is going to be the right fit for this school to help, you know, move things like who's the PLC facilitator who'll be able to work with the various personalities on my campus or whatever? I just think it can't just be the principal. Because and what we did with those previous positions, what I can't even remember was it M, not MTSS, I'd be behavioral health professionals, whoever, where we did the central pool.
Yep, PHP.
Um, because what I don't want to do is encourage the friends and family plan, right? What I want to do is to make sure that we're using these dollars to, to ensure that we get the best possible fit for that campus. I might be great for school A, but not school B. And if, if there's relatively inexperienced principals, they, I mean, there's something to be said for experience. I'm just going to ask that, that we look at that? Um, cause otherwise I'm concerned that we won't get the return on investment we expect. Thank you.
Mrs. McQuinn?
I know you want to get through this, but following up with Dr. Robinson. In my mind, that is the responsibility of the region office. And we have instructional superintendents and I can do this, regional superintendents who are higher, they supervise principals. So that's what principal supervisors should be hands on doing, in my mind.
So I just, I want to agree with that. I mean, that was kind of like my compromised position, but not to just say it's just the principal, that's my point. Thank you.
Yes.
And, and I want to also agree that, you know, we do have inexperienced principals that may not even have the training of some of these people that we're hiring to go into their schools. So to leave it up to the principals, I'd rather see the regional superintendents. Um, those are the ones that, that, you know, to make sure that, that these people are the ones that we want in the schools and um.
Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board, I don't, I don't disagree at all. What I'll do is I'll make a commitment, we'll work with um, Mr. Tierney and the regional superintendents to create that process. Basically, the principals just do, go through the interview process, that position needs to be vetted by the regional office. So I actually agree with you more than you actually know on this, so we will, I, I will commit to you, we'll make that work. I also think it's important for us, I'm, I'm channeling Mike, he hasn't said anything to me. But I want all of us to be cognizant of one fact, we still have to deal with the enrollment issue here. And so I just want all of us to put that on the table, cause I know my fans and people are like, okay, this is all great, but if the numbers come in low. So we just, I need to add that on everyone's radar, that, you know, right now, just of the potential, cause we just don't know until the kids show up and we have to make those adjustments. So it's just something I want the public to understand.
And before we move on to middle, have we given any consideration to pre-K? I mean, we have pre-K programs in the school, are we, can we do anything there to try and get these kids ready for kindergarten? So that when they get to kindergarten, they know the alphabet, you know, they know how to spell their names? They, are we just waiting till they get to kindergarten to start working with them?
No, we're not waiting till they get to kindergarten, Ms. Bobbiary, we are working, they're not part of the SASC. Um, but we are indeed working with um, MJ Steel, our director for early childhood, um, in realigning some pieces with VPK, with pre-K.
And I would also add that some of our community partners who are in this space as well.
Exactly.
You know, I, Keith and Glenn are being very humble. So there's a lot of conversations around the pre-K pieces as well. Uh, matter of fact, as I understand it, several board members have pre-K collaboratives in different communities. And I think in this particular moment, even some of those entities are getting CARES Act money. So there's, there's a lot of collaboration and conversations around that. And so I think, but I think for the purposes of the day, it's just getting our first leg out, you know, moving. And then we, there's a lot of conversations over the next year on, and let's be clear, what, what the team is creating is getting a starter for this year. But this one year is really a planning year, like if you really think about it, because the bulk of the money is in years two, three and the summer, in the fourth summer. Uh, but to your point, even that getting them to, to pre-K is, is a big deal, Mr. Bobbiary. And again, along with that universal screener, these are all things on our list to check off. We just got to get this first part out, out the gate.
Thank you. You want to move on?
Yeah, thank you, you're welcome, you're happy to. So at the middle school level, in, in our uh, current strategic plan, we know that when we back map graduation and students who went off track for graduation in middle school, ELA and math played a critical role, especially scoring at level one, while we targeted that in the tutorials. So again, providing that direct instruction and becoming the expert and support in that small group instruction for English language arts. Um, and for mathematics in the middle school will be in additional positions for all tier one and tier two schools. Additional specialists would be provided at the district level to provide that professional development and training around those particular components. Again, the PLC facilitator that we talked about at the elementary would exist also in particular uh, in the core subject areas where we have those new standards being implemented at the middle school level, again, all tier one and two schools. And then um, intensive reading support and intensive math, this would be built right into the master board. Where we know there are some students who have had substantial, substantial learning loss due to COVID and need a specific different intervention built into the regular school day. So this would be uh, an additional position built into the master board. So for, for, for reading, so uh, you know, programs such as Wilson and others that we, we hear often about that could be able to be scheduled for those students needing that type of support. The intensive math support, really addressing those algebra one foundational skills. Again, for those students who've had the substantial math drops, to be able to schedule it right into their school day. Um, and not have to wait and hope to get it after school another time, but it's built into the school day. And you'll see that also at the high school level for tier one and tier two schools. So at the high school level, I, I'm going to start with uh, graduation. So as I mentioned earlier, that the current juniors are faced with the changes in the Concord's scores, um, which we could see a cliff in graduation rates um, without intervening. And this was prior to, to the pandemic, so we know that this has been exasperated moving forward. So we're providing um, all schools uh, up to a thousand, an additional position. Those with 1,000 or more students, two positions to provide direct instruction in SAT and SAT. Again, a specialist position will be put at the school district level to provide uh, support around what are the best materials to use? And this is something we want to watch very closely. So each administration of an SAT or an ACT, we want to have these students tested and look at the practices that the teachers are using. And where we see some great success, scale that up across the entire school system and learn from these teachers and what they're doing. So this particular position has implications uh, district wide with what they're going to be doing. We talked about uh, uh, the intensive ELA support and math teacher, uh, again, the PLC facilitator. And then algebra, another critical component for graduation requirement is algebra. So how do we get, we know that uh, the students who are more accelerated in math tend to take algebra in middle school. At the high school level, those students who need additional support. So how do we get the best resources, making sure that we're pulling the best materials, uh, as well as the best teaching practices? And is providing support um, in the front end in those algebra classes um, with this additional support position? Go ahead, go ahead, okay.
You know, I hate to interrupt, but board members raise their hand, so if you see me kind of leaning into the microphone, whenever, I'm not going to interrupt you, but whenever you, if you could, Mrs. Andrews, Mrs. Andrews has a question.
Thank you, and you know, we already have the uh, intensive reading and math teachers in the school. So this is in addition to what they're already getting these units right here?
This is in addition, yes.
And, and also, uh, you know, it's very difficult because many times when the children are taking the intensive classes, they don't get a chance to actually have any other school experiences. Because it knocks out their fine arts or whatever else that they may want to do. So do you have a, a component where some of this could be, uh, they could very well get some of this help after school? Where we would be paying teachers to kind of stay on, to do some additional work with them? Because there's just so many hours in the day, you know, to do the things that we're talking about doing here. And if we have an extended day for some of these students to get this instruction and paying the uh, teachers to do what has to be done, it's going to help them in the long run. So has that thought process uh, come to you all?
Well, I mean, the schools, the schools will continue to receive their um, their tutorial dollars, um, Ms. Andrews. Um, to where, you know, they will be able to provide the, you know, before, during the day or after school tutorial. But when we talk in regards to the intensive math piece, and I know when we say intensive, um, sometimes we're thinking that, you know, um, these are the students that are really missing some basic fundamental skills. Um, particularly with, um, I'll go back to middle school for a minute. And with that intensive math, we had the foundational, the fundamental algebra skills. And that's a hope to where those students that are participating, that may be on that cusp of not having those fundamental algebra scores, well, to get those students to take algebra in eighth grade. Uh, when they get to high school, of course, will be those students that are still not just there yet, but we need to get them to the algebra. So we will have to look at the students um, per se, because they all are different. And to your point, if indeed, if we could work with them after school, with the teacher to provide that support, to allow them that flexibility during the day, the funding will be there because schools will receive an allocation for tutorial dollars.
Go ahead, Ms. Andrews.
I'd just like to follow up because we close our buildings during the weekend. And now that we have this additional funding.
You said during the weekend?
Yeah, Saturday.
Okay.
Saturday, you know, the only time I know that we open it up, when we're trying to get ready for FSA and things like that. But now that we have this funding and we know these students need this help, I think we need to have a component where we can open our schools. We know where the students are, we know they're going to need this help. And teachers uh, can hopefully be able to, to work on the weekends, especially on the Saturday.
We've had many schools to open, I mean, to do Saturday tutorial. I think that was at the discretion of the school if they were going to do Saturday tutorial.
That's, that's a good segue to this next, if I can just finish this last component.
I just want to say sometimes it's, I, I'm going to let you.
No, no, cause that plays into what you're saying, Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, cause we need to open the schools up, not at a school's discretion to try to find the right talent to help our students on the weekend when we have our buildings closed.
Dr. Robinson?
Okay, yeah, cause this next piece, Ms. Andrews gets into this whole piece, so the sunset programming. Some of you will recall, just so, so to your point, Ms. Andrews, how do we extend the learning day um, in all? So this is for all high schools, so this is tier one, two and three. So all schools, high schools would get additional funding to provide eight, nine, 10, um, in some cases 11 period day. Um, or a period zero, where we see some schools have played that out. So that um, through credit accrual, through programs that we currently own, such as Edgenuity and extending that learning time beyond when the bell rings at three o'clock, to ensure that some students who need, and, and what we've learned uh, through the re-engagement process of students who have not come back, um, some have, have not come back because they need an alternative time for scheduling, because they're either working or they just need more time because they're so far behind. Um, or their current students are in the school during the day, um, that need uh, additional time. So this will be provided to all schools, um, so we want to get that, so they can build that out in their master boards. So this will provide us six period supplements um, at all of the high schools in the district. So then I'll turn it back over and I'll stop there.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, so I want to go talk about middle school again. So um, can we just get a cost of what it would um, take to provide after school programming to be available for every middle school student? And so when I say after school programming, I'm thinking about homework assistance, but also expanded learning opportunities. So this is what I know for sure, middle school students should not be home alone. We should have engaging, life enhancing activities for them after school. Whether it's robotics, chess club, culinary, whatever it is, right? Now, I can tell you, we did this at Kennedy Middle School a couple of years ago. Um, thank you to G O Homes for donating some money that was entirely spent by transportation for the additional activity bus. But in, in prime time help with, with, with some of the expanded learning opportunities. But those children just seem like they started falling from the sky. There were hundreds of kids who were staying for the program once it developed. And I'm just saying, that's an opportunity to help them develop um, hobbies or um, en, enticing activities, that's probably not the right word. Um, that they would want to be engaged with, that could be used almost as a hook to keep them engaged in their regular school day activities, right? And so I would just like to know what their price tag might be? Cause I think that that's worth an investment. I think that the ESSR dollars require some more partnership with community-based organizations. So we could pull in more community-based organizations to help provide those activities. There's a guy that would come here once a year and get, show us his chess club award. We need to take advantage of his desire to do more chess clubs, right? But can we just like price that out? Because like you're making me think of the stuff I want to do for 20 years, right? And so that's one of them. Um, and then the other question I have is, and so what are we going to do differently in intensive reading? You can tell me later, but we got to do something differently. I mean, what, my next data presentation is actually on intensive reading and how many children take intensive reading. and how many children take intensive reading year after year after year. So we have to do something different to make it effective. So we can follow up with that later. Maybe that's another workshop, but yeah, thank you.
Let me ask you a question then, Mrs. Whitfield. So I don't see anywhere in here, we talked about the alternative schools. What are they getting?
So I actually met with Ms. Elaine Hubbard Williams today to begin those conversations about what does that look like? Because that's not gonna look the same as for comprehensive sites. And so that'll be coming out in phase two, part two. So this, again, this is just the first big jump into these monies. We're not done spending because we're pretty excited, but alternatives is definitely on the list. As far as what's actually, what are those missing gaps that the board has brought up in the past? Not just adding additional positions, you know, right now we do have smaller class size already and things like that. So what's actually gonna not only build the capacity to success, but is it actual programming? And look at some other designs around the country. You know, Dr. Fanois challenged us with that for the last couple of years of how do we do it differently? So that's the conversations we're having that we'll bring forward.
So what are we doing during the summer for the alternative schools? Are we offering any of these kind of programs for those kids?
Yes, they're getting, they're participating in the summer school program.
Okay, Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I was, I actually got to be in Mr. Oswald's office right after he got a chance to show me how the the tiers were happening. And and I was so unbelievably impressed with this plan. And I just wanted to say thank you for your work. If through the data that he was able to show me, it was so clear that it really rose the schools that need the most attention to the top. And then the next set was perfectly clear was number two. It's what we all know intuitively as when we think about these schools. And so to see the focus and really the data kind of bearing out what we all know just meant so much. And I thought it was wonderful. And I love the plans that you've put in here for these schools. I think this is a real opportunity for us to make a huge difference in these schools. And so I'm thrilled and super excited. I wanted to wait till you got to the end of high schools to say those comments. Because I think, you know, what you've, what you've come up with is so smart. And so I just want to thank staff for all your work on this because I really think this is, this is what we need. This is what I've been hoping for all this time to really put that extra emphasis. And then reading recovery, I know Dr. Robinson was cheering about it. I also cheered inside. I think reading recovery is is really special and something that's gonna make a huge difference in our system. So I'm hoping that all of these things are gonna really lead us to those strategic plan improvements we've been trying so hard to get. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Ms. Whitfield, I would like to thank you for those comments. I think it's important for the board to understand sort of the duress and stress our team has been under. There were moments where, you know, Keith and Glenn in particular had to go away and hide and get the work done in sort of their own mini retreat. And I think, you know, and Mike's team as well, like just again, I think we all have to be clear on something. I don't know if Ms. McQuinn said it, but we're gonna be audited in a way we've never been audited before. We're gonna be very clear about that, I think. And as a person who has been called, had 23 subpoenas come his way in the last year, I'm just telling you, so this is why this is so important, this level of intentionality on every dollar, on what the plan actually is, which is why all of our plans have to be aligned and all of our evaluations have to be aligned. I think the other piece that's that is being spelled out here that is different is the accountability associated with it. Because if it's all written in the plans, then when the schools write their school improvement plans, it should align perfectly to the strategic plan. Our evaluation should be tied to that. We're all moving in the same direction. So this is one way that you can, you have the buckets, you know where the money is going. And again, we can make those adjustments on the fly, but I just, I want to just thank you and other board members for their praise of the team. Because now we're not finished. Lord knows, we still have, I mean, we just went through budget meetings, so that was, that's done. And we still have a lot more to go, but it's, and I want to be clear that the team is working on fumes at this point. So I'm gonna say on the record too, for all of my team who is trying to get out of taking their vacation, you must take it. Because we're no good when we're just all dog tired. And so I want to, I want to echo Ms. Ms. Whitfield's sentiments.
Okay, well, I think some of these slides might be a little redundant here. I can probably pick up a little speed because we've, we've touched on some of this, but just the, the remaining pots of S R two. So we do have this, we talked about the computers, we talked about the non-enrollment assistance. We've got this $38.5 million left that we're still planning, although we would like to use some of that to cover the textbook adoptions coming up over the next couple of years. And then we've got 15.2 million of S R two that we have not figured out yet, right? And that's gonna allow us to go back to some of the recommendations the board has raised here today and continue to work with the team and start figuring that out. S R three, you know, we've got a lot of work to do there. And as Ms. Andrews said, that does require community input and the board's approval. So you'll be getting a bigger, larger plan at some point. But we want to be thoughtful and we're not gonna rush into this. And we want to, whatever plan we build, I would, I want to structure in a way that we retain a little flexibility. Because three years, a lot can happen over three years and we need to be able to be nimble enough. If we see something that's working extraordinary well or something that may not be hitting the mark so that we can adjust. This is next steps. We'll be back, we hope to be back in front of you in late July with some of the phase two items with, as part of the SASB plan. These next couple of sheets are just, and I apologize if that's hard to read, but we wanted to start showing you as you, as you combine the three buckets of funds over that whole, the next, you know, three years, you know, how it adds up and how it may break down. This is a draft. We're still working through the plan, obviously. But it just spells out some of the things that we, we know we're gonna have some costs with just dealing with COVID. We've started penciling in the unfinished learning initiatives that were presented to you earlier today. And then I do suspect that we'll probably use some of these dollars for technology and for facility improvements. And we're working with Ms. Paul's team to develop a project list potentially to address ventilation so that we see potentially some of the dollars going there. That's really our next steps. Keep planning, keep coming back, keeping everyone apprised and continuing to build our plan. We are, the, the work that you're doing with strategic plan has been very helpful and fortuitous in that it's given us the venue also to start gathering some of that community input on what's important to the community and how these dollars may help us address those needs. The, the last two big things I want to really, if you could just bear with us and muster up some attention. We've got a couple of important things from Ms. Canus to Ms. Evans. The critical work they've done to to reach a balanced budget. And I think maybe I need to pause for a question here.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And it's not so much a question as an ask. First of all, I think the plan's terrific. I, I know that there are a lot of eyes on us with these dollars and we get messages from the public. I just want to make sure, and I'm sure you're thinking of this, that we use our communications team to share these plans as we go along so that people know how the money is being used. Because people think we're getting these huge pots of money and we can do all these other things. They need to know how we're targeting it. So I think that the messaging is gonna be incredibly important so that the public understands what we're doing and also understands the realities, the options that their students are going to have, those that are in the most need. So that's just my ask is that we make sure we communicate clearly to the public.
Yes, I, I agree. And I kind of liken it a little bit to the referendum. I think we're gonna have to kind of quarterly or periodic updates, you know, to the board and the community on how we're spending these dollars. And Mrs. Shay is great to work with.
I was just going to say that the Council of Great City Schools, thank you so much, Mr. Burke. I mentioned, Michael Casserly mentioned you just last week on your leadership with all of the 72 urban districts and helping them to put the, the money plan together. And I feel very comfortable that Palm Beach County is in good hands with the work that you've done for us as well as the others. But I wanted to say there is a piece from the council for communications, Ms. Brill. So I'm hoping that Ms. Shay, Claudia Shay, is on those meetings because they are putting the best practices on how we should go out and communicate with the public because there is a big public piece to this. And just like what we did today, I think she can get that information from the council and begin to start doing those pieces that you're talking about, Ms. Brill. Because the other districts, these big urban districts are already putting it out there. So thank you.
Yeah, all of the information from the council is actually sent to us. And so that is, I share that with all the teams that it infects. So matter of fact, I'm on a call with them Thursday, but every document the council creates, we send it out to the teams. Great news about our finance team is that when they got those documents, they had already created their own. So, so we're absolutely sharing that information from Mr. Cassley and the team.
Mr. Burke, before, before you move on to operating, you said there's 15.2 million dollars left of S R two. And, and again, I'm over, I, I guess I'm overly concerned about the, the alternative schools. I mean, we understand that we wanted to get all this done today so we could get these people in place so the principals at their schools know what they're getting. But we have principals of those alternative schools that aren't gonna find out what they're getting now unless you're gonna do that in next week. So I just want to make sure, I've been to some of the alternative schools and I've heard what they need. They need different kind of coaches for their kids. I don't want to wait till July to tell those principals what they're getting when they already know what they need. So I would hope that we could work on that very quickly and make sure that those kids in those schools get the services they need rather than wait until, you know, until the end and give them whatever's left over. So can we just make that a priority?
Yes, sir. We're gonna work closely with the team here.
Absolutely.
All right, Dr. Robinson?
Okay, so while we're spending time, spending this money and dreaming the big dream, I want to reformat alternative ed. That's the conversation I want to have because I think we better serve students. And so not to go too far into the weeds on it, but we have students who are being served at Riviera Beach Prep, but there's no like program in South County. So, and I'm gonna leave it there. Like, I know you guys know exactly where I'm going and where the roadblocks are. And, but now we have an opportunity, I think, to get past those roadblocks. But I think we need to focus on the outcomes we want for children. And, and part of that, Mr. Barbie, is gonna be to make sure we have CTE programming at each and every alternative school. There's some stuff coming out of the, out of the woodwork with Mr. Boggs. And I thank him for working on that specifically at Riviera Beach Prep. But there's children in South County who could benefit from a similar academic kind of program.
Mrs. Andrews?
And we don't have to go far. Our own conversion charter school, Inlet Grove, is a model. Every kid that crosses that stage, and we're getting ready to go to graduations, already have those industry certifications. Many of them are already dual-enrolled at the colleges, have taken the coursework necessary to get the skills so that they can be employable as well as college-ready. I keep saying this every year, that we have a model, an excellent model at Inlet Grove. And we need to go look at it and pattern ourselves. Mr. Boggs knows he was at, at South Tech, so, and he started at Inlet Grove. So we know that model is out there when we're talking about saving children and giving them what they need. So let's take a look at Inlet Grove.
All right, Mr. Burke. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Canust.
Okay, so in our last meeting, we were facing a $27 million shortfall in our general fund or our operating budget. And we were waiting on additional guidance from the Florida Department of Education on S R funds. And so with that additional guidance that we received, you know, specifically S R two in the advance that we spoke a lot in a lot of detail today, we're able to use those funds to close that gap. Although it's not ideal to use one-time funds because of the uncertainty that we're facing with enrollment next year and the number of students that are going to be coming back, we need to make sure that we have, that we're able to maintain a certain level of staffing in order to meet the needs of the students. And this is consistent with how we use the ARA dollars back in, during the Great Recession. So we're gonna continue to monitor enrollment and we're going to make adjustments to staffing as necessary. But we want to make sure that we're not making cuts too soon. So with that, we are able to actually have a balanced budget for next year. Just as a refresher, we made no changes to the school-based allocations. I mean, we did align them as best we could to project, projected enrollment. And then with department budgets, we did go through a detailed department review with Dr. Fanois. He met with each department head, reviewed each of their budgets. We made very minor changes though within the department budgets. And the reason for that is we were very proactive and we made those, those reductions going into FY21 because we were anticipating having a significant reduction in revenue this year. And so as a result, we had already made those cuts. And so there weren't really additional cuts that we could make within the departments. We do have some good news that within the property tax values laid on Friday, the property tax values came back higher than the original projection. And so it nearly doubled from 2.76% increase in, in property, assessed property values to 5.3%, which is going to have an increase in revenue of $3.8 million. And that will help to offset the reliance on those one-time funds that we're going to be using from the S R dollars. We also continue to monitor the pending charter school referendum litigation and the amount of money that we're gonna have to set aside, that $25 million. But with the increase in the local property values, that is also going to help to mitigate the amount of money that we're going to have to actually cut from the referendum. So we did have some good news with the increase in the local property tax values. And so with that, if there are no questions, I'm going, Ms. Evans is going to get into the capital budget.
Good afternoon. I have good news with the capital budget. It's also balanced for FY22. And there's been very few changes. I'm going to try to highlight what those are. I also want to point out that we still have year two through 10 of the capital plan that still needs to be balanced. So this is just FY22. So if you're looking at the attached document, it's just FY22. So if you have no projects that you're looking for that aren't showing up, it's because it's just FY. I know we had, we've had discussions about that in the past. I wanted to make sure I covered that. Total projected revenues of 1.35 billion, carry forward is nearly, is over half of it at 688 million. And that's something that I want to point out, that's things like the money for to build triple O high school, which is over 100 million. It's the sales tax referendum projects that are getting started this summer. So while that seems like a very big number, there's a lot of ongoing work that's happening. And you've seen the videos coming out of communication of all the work for the referendum. So this is being put to work. It's not just sitting on the sidelines. We will be, we'll be updating the sales tax and property tax revenues. As Ms. Canus said, we do get good news with property taxes. Sales tax has got another interesting twist. The governor did sign the bill that allowed this state to capture sales tax revenues for online sales for businesses that aren't in the state of Florida. And we're trying to, I'm working with the county. We're gonna work to collaboratively to come up with new projections to see what that impact is. I'm not sure it's as high as what the state has forecasted. So I'm gonna be very conservative with those numbers and we'll be happy if it's higher than that, but it's something to monitor. The capital plan, as I said, we're still working on that. We plan to bring that to you in August at a separate workshop for the, there really were no significant changes. The construction projects, there's no new ones. There were several that you'll see where it looks like the money has shifted. That's just timing. It's not changing the opening dates. There are only two schools that do have changes in opening dates. Grove Park Modernization, we were delayed getting the approval from DOE to tear down all the old buildings, so that pushed it back a year. And Roosevelt Full Service, they're still working through some of the plans for what's going to be at that school. So it's been pushed back one year. Facility renewals, you saw that increase significantly. There were a lot of projects that were funded this year. Contracts are being awarded in August. And I shifted it back one year to eliminate having to borrow extra money this year. So it doesn't delay the projects at all. They just didn't need the cash until June. They needed it in August or September. So that's changed the budget in the way it looks pretty significantly. We've added other facility projects in for ADA compliance. And we've added something that we haven't had for years. It's called athletic facilities. It's really for resurfacing tracks. So there's a lot of those that need to be redone. So we've added that in and some more money in for minor projects. The technology funds, when you look at that, it looks like it went down. We actually advanced money from FY22 into 21 to get that Chromebook order in that Mr. Burke talked about earlier today. So it's really not changing it. It's just moving it up a couple of months. And this slide, I know that's a big concern. You all want to see the list of construction projects. This is the list for the entire capital plan, not just FY22. So you'll see all the projects are still there. The notes in red is Forest Hill High School, the parking lot in addition. This slide was developed and there has been a change with the city. They have come up with a plan for the golf course. So now that they have a plan, the district needs to decide how we're going to react to that and what we're doing with Forest Hill High School. So we hoping to have that plan to you when we come back in August. The facilities team is working hard on ideas and what we can do. But there's no new projects here. Nothing's come off except the ones that have been completed. I took off Faraday. It's opened and it doesn't need to be here anymore. That's really the, the summary of the capital plan. We'll, we'll be coming back to you in August with the full capital plan.
All right.
Turn it back to Mr. Burke?
Yeah, that's, you know our calendar. We keep going until September's final adoption. I noticed the workshop ran long, but it was an important one and you really helped give us the guidance we need to get a lot of work done this summer. So I appreciate, I appreciate all that. That's all we have.
I just want to thank the team. I think one thing I would add on the floor is.
I think one thing I would add on the Forest Hill, so this week we're doing the groundbreaking for Triple O. So the, we'll see once that school is open if that impacts significantly Forest Hill with that rebounding. I think that will dictate some of the future work we end up doing in Forest Hill. But thank you guys, great work. At this time, is it coming soon? We want to know.
We have a speaker for the next workshop.
What are you doing?
She's here, but she doesn't want to speak. I texted you.
Today's Strategic Plan Workshop is the fifth in the series of regular updates to the board and the community. It also marks a critical milestone of our overall development timeline, sharing the draft themes, goals, and measures with the board and the community. I want to thank the 35 members of our Strategic Plan Steering Committee for their meaningful contributions and process thus far. Before we begin, though, I want to stress that we are sharing today is just the first draft. This will be adjusted as we get feedback from the board. It's important to me as a superintendent to be transparent with the development process. And while these drafts are well in advance of the board's final approval in late July, once again, the feedback we get from the board today along with the multitude of other stakeholders via our focus groups, again, our focus groups will be discussing a lot of issues, including that will inform some of our S R three decisions, will be conducted later on during the month of June and July. We will be used by district leadership and the steering committee to make those themes and goals and et cetera. And with that, I turn it over to our chief of staff office for our brief presentation today on strategic plan.
Chairman Barbieri, vice chairwoman, Mrs. Brill, school board members, Dr. Fanoi. I'm pleased today to be here to help facilitate Strategic Plan Board Workshop Number Five. Joining me at the table is Ms. Kathy Villavicencio. You see the agenda for the workshop? This really is a milestone meeting in that we will brief the board on the draft goals that will end up being our next strategic plan. As we're sharing this with the board this evening, we're also sharing this with the greater community via focus groups. Those focus group meetings have already started and will continue throughout this entire month. So we're going to share the steering committee's initial proposal for themes, goals, and measures, and give the board the opportunity to give feedback. You've really got a couple of options regarding feedback on this strategic plan workshop. There'll be a similar workshop later in the month. You could choose to wait and give feedback later on after the process has started to play out. You could give specific feedback on goals that you think is applicable. You could also take a broader look and just give higher-level feedback, such as these goals seem to fit in with our vision and vision, vision and mission because these goals do not seem to align with vision and mission. There's too many goals, there's too few, I think this feels right. So keep in mind that the feedback you give tonight will ultimately help the steering committee guide us towards the final goals that will be presented to the board late Speaking of the steering committee, you've seen this slide before. This is the, a visual of the organizations and the people representing those organizations who make up the steering committee. I'd like to take a moment to thank them for their hard work. They've put a lot of hours in, worked particularly hard, and the quality of their, of their work has been really outstanding, so I'm grateful for all of their efforts. I'm going to point out that you can see that this steering committee is comprised of a mix of community partners and district staff. That's by design, you know, COVID has turned, has taught us a lot of lessons. One of the most poignant lessons that I've learned is the importance of community support for a school system.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. Hello, board. I also wanted to thank, one of our steering committee members is here in the audience, Ms. Charmaine Postal, so just wanted to thank her for making the time to show support today. So just as a reminder, we had reviewed some critical structures with the board on March 3rd before we kicked off this work. I know there were a lot of conversations about timeline, you know, engaging with the Council of Great City Schools, what might that look like? And so on March 3rd, we presented, you know, our plan for rolling this work out, and just wanted to take a moment to pause and review that. And so again, you know, the steering committee, as Mr. Tierney said, is a mix of community partners and district staff, just to ensure we're kind of pushing our thinking with different partners at the table, and then also knowing that implementation is really where we want to focus our efforts. And so if we have folks at the table from the outset, we're hoping that that will just strengthen the work once we're ready to roll here. And so really informed by school board policy, you know, the school board reviews and ultimately approves the goals, themes, and measures that the superintendent recommends. So, you know, today we'll be sharing those drafts with you. Feedback is optional, but we will be coming back to the board in late June after we have some revisions, just to again, show you drafts along the way because we really understand that transparency is important, especially since you are the ultimate approvers of that plan. And so right now, we're kind of in phase two, as Dr. Fanoi said, the entire month of June is devoted to focus groups. That will be a mix of, you know, district staff-led focus groups, as well as some focus groups led by insight, insight education with some of our key stakeholders. And so we're really trying to just take this on the road. And regardless of whether, you know, different stakeholder groups have feedback, it's just getting people to have eyes on this, really more so than anything else. So they know that the district is really making a concerted effort to be strategic. You know, you heard Mr. Burke and his team talk about the American Rescue Plan and the S R three funds. I know Mrs. Andrews talked about getting community input. So it's kind of serendipitous that all of this has aligned because we can leverage these opportunities to make sure, you know, we are engaging the community in those conversations, that they understand what the work is. So just wanted to remind folks that this is the framework, and, you know, those key performance indicators will really be defined by the folks that do the actual work once the school board approves those goals and the measures. So again, the steering committee is really focused on the what, and then the how comes after, and is really largely owned by the folks who actually implement that work. So that's, that's an important distinction there. Quickly, you know, we share this every time we come forward, the timeline for strategic plan development. We did push back just the board workshop, today's board workshop by one week. But again, this is really where we're unveiling our draft goals and measures. So as Dr. Fanoi said, this is a critical milestone today. And as Mr. Tierney said, just really thanking the members of the steering committee for supporting this work moving forward. But again, now we're really engaging the community in phase two to validate, right, these drafts, to make sure they look good, to make recommendations around clarity and intent. And so just wanted to orient us to that timeline. And I'll pass it back to Mr. Tierney.
This is the summary of the steering committee's work to date. It started basically, basically looking at group norms and a calibration of purpose. They moved on to data analysis and then root cause analysis. They spent a lot of time looking at the feedback we got from the initial survey. And all of that culminated in them creating the draft goals that you'll see shortly. Insight Education Group has been assisting us with facilitating all the steering committee meetings. They're going to help us with some of the high-impact focus groups meeting as well. They were here last week when the, when the workshop was scheduled for last week. Could not work out having them here this time, but we will work hard to get them next time we have a strategic plan board workshop.
Mrs. Andrews, sorry.
Can you tell us about the Inside Education Group, the consultant?
Tell about?
Yeah, just who they are. You said they were here, so how many people? Is it several consultants? What, you know, you did say that we weren't actually paying them as volunteers, so just explain to the board. I've never met them personally, so I think we all need to know what that is.
Sure, they're a community partner, and they're assisting us as part of a larger grant called Project Ignite. It's a TSL grant. They're, they really have an excellent national reputation for creating high-quality strategic plans or assisting districts for community, for creating those. We've been extremely impressed with the work they've done with steering committee. We're looking forward to helping them or watching them help us with the, with the focus groups as well.
And I'll just share, I know we shared some sample plans with the board, you know, when we started this work back in March, and so Guilford County, we have that REI connection with Dina Hayes. Insight actually helped them with their strategic plan, so we shared that with you, we can reshare it again. But, you know, they're, they're very adept at this work, as Mr. Tierney said, and so we'll share the MOU for the Project Ignite, so you can kind of see some of that. But I know that that MOU came forward for, for board approval in March, and so we'll reshare it as well.
Also, I think that we, we, well, at least I instructed the board, I mean, the team, to make sure that the board, when we got the grant, to go over with each of the board members, and we'll be glad to go over that grant again if necessary.
Mrs. Andrews?
Just a quick follow-up as I look at the, the chart. Now, the NSB, the National School Boards Association, is that Mary?
Yes, it is.
So we are keeping her on. I know that we do have this new department that's supposed to be doing this, so, so we do have several consultants, as well as the new department to get the strategic, is that what's happening here? Just tell me.
She's still under contract, Ms. Fertakas, and we were looking at, at Insight as a community partner who's working with us through a grant. So we don't qualify, we don't refer them as consultants, but they are another community partner who are assisting us. These are the guidelines that the steering committee used when they were using the draft First two are really driven by the, the work of the board. And then the last three came from lessons learned from our current strategic plan, and there were, as well as the national scan we did when we started this. And Ms. Villavicencio just referenced some of the strategic plans that we shared with you. We looked across the country at, at strategic plans we thought were of high quality, and those are really the two driving factors regarding the criteria.
All right, so we'll kind of get to the meat of the sandwich here. So when the steering committee started drafting goals through the facilitation of Insight, and I know Ms. Andrews talked about how many people, right? So we're working with one project lead, and he really facilitates the meeting. So I, you know, encourage everybody to go to palmbeachschools.org and watch those recorded steering committee meetings, so you can kind of see that in action. And then we also sometimes have some, you know, one or two support staff on the call as well. But really, having that one dedicated person means a lot because we have frequent meetings with him as we prepare the content and make sure that, you know, everything the board has tasked us with is aligned with the work of the steering committee. So just showing this slide because, you know, we use the word goals, measures, targets, buzzwords are very big in education in particular. So we shared this with the steering committee just to norm on what their scope of work is as a steering committee. And of course, want to highlight that the steering committee is absolutely informing a lot of this work, but ultimately, you know, we're circling back with principals, with our chiefs and division and department heads to make sure that they are also providing feedback, either via focus groups or other more targeted, you know, executive cabinet meetings. Because we understand that it can't just sit with one person. That's something that we've heard from the board time and time again. And so that criteria that Mr. Tierney shared really drives, you know, what the steering committee came up with and has proposed. But again, these refinements are really informed by the school board, our different stakeholder groups, our chiefs. So just wanted to again, say that, that there are a lot of eyes on this, helping us make sure these are a good representation of what we need to work towards and focus on as a district moving forward. And so this is just kind of, again, norming what are goals, measures, and targets, so that as we have this conversation, we can kind of make sure that that just, we're all aligned in that sense. And so the next three slides are the three themes and goals and associated goals and measures that we are proposing, thanks to the help of the steering committee. As Dr. Fanoi said, this is the first draft, so everything is open to feedback. I think today for the board, you know, it's definitely optional to give us some feedback on this, but we really want to put this in front of the board to see if there's any feedback that you would be willing to provide, you know, that may help the steering committee's work as they refine these goals. And then, you know, specifically, I know there's some hands, but anything that's, you know, particularly compelling to you, anything around needing more clarity, including things like the number of goals. And then again, do you see alignment with some of that foundational work that you had shared with us? So we'll, you know, we'll, we can go one by one, but definitely want to leave the majority of today's time for you to share that feedback if you choose to do so.
We have a couple of board members who want to speak. Mrs. McQuinn, then Dr. Robinson?
Mine will be at the higher level, and already given Kathy a heads up about what they are. On closing the gaps, so I'm looking at goal one, well, that's more, that's the specific one, and, and it can translate across other ones. I want to do more than closing a gap, and I know we have to look at that. And when it says decrease gaps, okay, I'm good with that, maybe. I am good with that. But when it says while, while improving grade level proficiency for every student, I'm going to go back to Dr. Robinson's, what is the portrait of a graduate? I don't just want grade level proficiency for every student. And I, and, and I want us to address before we go to the community, when we talk about equity, we're not talking about lowering expectations for any students. So again, I know we don't solve it today, but I'd like to have the discussion about it.
Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I want to follow up on the same goal one. So I don't like close the gaps. I actually hate talking about the gaps, right? So I don't know what the, the best words would be, but maybe it's increased proficiency for each group or something, but not, not, we should be comparing to 100% proficiency if we're looking at groups, right? And if we're looking at individual children, we should be looking at their performance compared to level five, right? And so it, you know, like, all of us, it'd be just fantastic if all of us are level five, right? But we could close the gap by holding somebody down. And I know that's not our intention, but I think we need to be very, very clear with the words. And then with the other ones, goes two, three, four, and four, all talk about access in, in the goal, I think it should be like provide. You know, instead of access, I mean, I just, like, just more definitive words. So, I mean, the descriptors, I think, are, are better than the, the overall, just, overall caption, so. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say a huge thank you to all the partners out there who worked on this. I know they've taken this very seriously, and so I really appreciate their time and effort, and that they cared enough to really even give us advice is just huge. Two comments. The first one is actually, I, I honed in on that word access as well. To me, it seems like, what do you mean access? Like, like, we're just going to provide you an opportunity, but if you don't take advantage of it, then you don't get it? Like, that just seems weird to me, because one of them is high-quality early literacy instruction, like, we should be giving high-quality early literacy to everyone. So the provide or some other better word in there, I think would be good. And then on actually, the second slide, I know, I know we're talking about embracing our community, but through our measures, we don't seem to have anything that really shows the connections to the organizations within the community. And I feel like there should be some sort of a tie to all these organizations that support us. There's just so many out there, so how we can evaluate that, I think, needs to be thought out a little bit more, and to make sure that we are drawing in those partners who are supporting our students, because we have so much. And, and the way that this strategic plan looks like, it looks like we're just planning on doing everything ourselves, but we don't do everything ourselves. We have so many people in the community that help us, and I think we need to recognize that somewhere in our strategic plan. I think maybe you might be tying that into where you say potential fourth goal around behavioral and mental health work. So maybe that, that could go in there, or it could be tied into goal three, which is like access to social and emotional support systems. The measures don't put something about community in there, but I think that maybe it could fit in there, so that is just some of the space that I was thinking we could add that in. Thank you.
I, I agree with, I think, Dr. Whoever said, I don't like decrease either, so we need to do something with that, so that it's clear to the community that we're not dumbing down the system to close the gap. So we need to fix that language. And while we're on goal one, we need to include pre-K in there. It says K-12 subgroups, you should be, pre-K should be included in goal one. With respect to access, I agree, I don't like access. We've had access all along, but some kids never get to get there. So maybe it's deliver necessary, high-quality early learning, whatever you guys come up with, but just simply having it available doesn't mean we're going to make sure the kids that need it get it. So we're going to need to do something with that. Dr. Robinson? Okay, Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. Thank you, and I agree with some of the things I've already heard. But I'm really concerned with the, uh, the emotional, uh, social, uh, and family connections as we come out of, uh, the pandemic. But as I look at this, when it says increase, increase could mean by one. We need to be a lot more specific than saying increase the percentages. I don't know what you're talking about there because it's not saying enough to me when you just say increase. And then when I looked at, uh, postgraduate success, uh, everyone can't, uh, we haven't been providing an industry certification for a lot of our children. So we need to look at vocational programs too. So this whole piece needs to kind of, it's undergraduate success, but it almost needs to be over here where we're talking about rigorous middle school, uh, as well as high school, because we've got to start with these children early. We can't wait for them to kind of say, uh, at the time, you know, for postgraduate success in high school. They're going to have all of these things happening. We've got to go back to the middle school and begin to identify students who are having difficulty that really need to focus maybe on, uh, advanced placement courses, but they may not want to do that. They may need to look at some career certifications as well as, uh, vocational programs. And we need to provide those kinds of opportunities to children early on. So that could be something that we need to do. But when I see, uh, increase, it, it really doesn't tell me much of anything other than that we're saying we're going to do something. And then when I looked at this and I looked at the strategic plan from last time, it's almost the same thing. We, we really do need to be specific about what we truly mean when we say equity and really getting to the, to the meat of what we want to do for the children in here. And, and it's the same kind of words again, you know, it's the same. And I thank everybody for their input, but we've got to make this tighter as to what we're going to do and how we're going to do it for high academic achievement literacy, closing the gaps, getting our communities involved. We say we're going to do it all the time, and now we're saying that we're going to increase it and, and we're going to do these things, but how? What does that mean? What does it look like? And, and so I think I need different kind of words to help me know that it's really going to be, um, an emphasis.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we omitted one important fact that Mrs. Andrews alluded to. We don't have the targets in here yet, simply because I think there's always a perception that the plan is already written. And we have definitely tried our best to mitigate that because that is absolutely not true. However, you know, we thought if we put targets already, it would kind of send the message that this is set in stone, we're not coming back, and so that's a very good point. Once these look like, you know, this is on the right track, we made the tweaks. In June, we're hoping to come with some of those proposed targets, so thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, I just, I want to follow up. I like the targets that's coming. But I'm talking about different kind of words when we start talking about community and, and what we're going to do. Not increase, but what, what kinds of things are you going to do? I want to see the targets for sure, but I want to see some different kind of wording in here that makes me know you're doing some kind of action other than just saying increase. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
And when you get to the, um, the community, you're going to, uh, increase the percentage of families. What does that mean? That, that, that doesn't mean much to me when you say that, but what are you actually going to do? And then you could put the targets in there, but I want to know specifics of what kinds of things you're going to do. Maybe, uh, a, a general, a general big, big word, but it needs to be something other than, uh, increase. If you're going to be, uh, uh, doing something within the community, talk about what you're going to do. And then you can put those, uh, targets in there. But this is just very broad, and it reminds me of what we've already done with the numbers, with the targets. So I'm looking for something different.
Dr. Robinson, then Ms. Brill, then Mrs. McQuinn.
Okay, so I guess I should be polite and defer to them since they haven't spoken yet, but don't forget me.
That was nice of you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Brill, and then Ms. McQuinn.
I'm such a nice person, you didn't know?
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm going to be very quick. I agree with everything that everyone said. We need more action words, more positive action words. But I just wanted to add one item into goal five for the postgraduate success, and that's apprenticeships. I think that's important that we throw that in there. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Mrs. McQuinn?
Dr. Robinson, you've got her turn? Oh, yay, okay. I promise I won't wordsmith, and I understand our strategies are not here yet. And as a district, I, I understand that we're setting the direction for what schools will then do and how their strategy, school-specific, will make it all happen. And I have confidence they will. So just going back to the theme, I know what, I, I understand, don't, don't folk, don't, um, whatever it is, dwell on the word improve. We're going to make that specific. Instead of academic access though, can it, and we've talked about closing opportunity gaps, no. But can we have academic success instead of access? So I, I, I won't wordsmith anymore tonight. I'll save that for next time.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Um, so now that I've been nice, I want to be disruptive. So, um, I think, so I keep thinking about, you know, all the work, all the changes we've tried to make as a district over time to improve outcomes. And what, what are the things that we did not do? And one of the major things is to partner with community, right? And so I really love this theme about embracing our community, but I think it should stand alone. I think we should split and have one theme that's embracing our community as partners or some such words. And under that, the goals, I would separate engaging, empowering, engaging families, and then empowering and engaging community as partners or whatever words would be, right? And then I would have the next theme be about the socio-emotional well-being with the goal of physical and emotional safety, access to socio-emotional support systems, and add the mental health work there. But in my head, the partnering with community and, and truly, um, working with parents as, as partners, like really, like really doing it, like really doing it, is so, um, such a change of how a business, the usual business, and I think it will make a significant difference. I think it should stand alone.
Standalone theme.
Right? Um, now, that's what I think. And then, um, the other thing is, so under this, under this empower and engage families and communities, so you have this whole thing, okay, increase the percentage to report positive. So is the reporting part I have a problem with? That's, that's just like answer the test correctly, right? So something that to me feels like an emotional word, like they feel or they, they have, um, positive proactive interactions with the school system. And that parents and community support providers are equipped. I don't know, I just.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I, our principal representatives have been absolutely phenomenal, and they are conducting focus groups right now with their colleagues. And they have been courteous enough to invite me to some of these, and, and when I can attend, I absolutely do. And they've talked about some of these measures, right? So we know having a goal like this is incredibly important. I think, you know, as we talk about the accountability with the ARP, SR3 funds, as well as just a referendum, right? What is the evidence that we're showing that we're making a difference, that we're meeting these goals? And to, you know, to be honest, these measures are harder, right? And a lot of times based on self-report. And, uh, and we typically just say how many sessions we provided, you know, how many referrals. So how do we turn that into something else? And so I think that's still a challenge, but, you know, appreciate you calling that out. I think we'll continue to work on that. And I think, again, having the focus groups, particularly with our principals and other folks, you know, with our chiefs leading their direct reports in these focus group conversations, will allow us to kind of get that group think and hopefully, you know, come up with something that does it justice. But definitely here you want all that.
My question, not just for Dr. Robinson, but the board, but like, do we want to quantify that, meaning the community, like? Because when you put it, when you quantify it, so there's a difference between qualitative and quantitative. If you quantify it, it has to be a hard number. So it's just food for thought, like, so I, I actually, I actually agree with this whole community engagement piece at every level, hiring communities, loaning communities. But the question becomes, how are you going to, you as a board, going to hold us accountable to that? What am I, what evidence am I going to give you ultimately to say that we met that target? And I think that's what we just have to, to work out.
Dr. Robinson?
So yeah, I, I agree with that, and that one is, is one, actually one of the harder ones. But what I wanted to insert in the conversation is, so, you know, as part of this, so, Council of Great City Schools, School Board Coaching Cohort, or whatever this thing is, I shouldn't say it like that. This group that I'm in, um, and they said something about strategic plans that clicked in my brain and that it is the superintendent's implementation plan, right? So, so like, I think, so we, so in other words, we need to micromanage the hell out of this at the front end, right? Because, I'm just saying. Because, and because then, I mean, I get it, we should just kind of step back and ask for the measurements of what's going on over time, right? But I want to include when we're talking about measurements, some of the measurements are process measurements, right? So when you come to the strategies that you're going to do, right, like, okay. So let me go to my reading recovery. If we say we want every school to have a reading recovery teacher, and then we have this many, you know, you'll measure, um, the process, but here's the expected outcome? And so, but we can't put the, the process measures in place until later. But I think as you're thinking through this, the process measures are important because at the end of the day, if we don't meet the mark, we don't, did we do what we said we were going to do? If we did, then we had the wrong strategy, if we didn't get the outcome we expected, right? Or what happens most of the time is we didn't do what we said we were going to do with fidelity. And so, but I think that we need to try, think about that process measure as we go along. But, um, but, but that's it. I mean, it, I, I think I'd just be thrilled if we do have, um, the family and community engagement part, embrace the community as a separate theme entirely, because I think we need to uplift the importance of that work.
Go ahead, Mrs. Whitfield.
I just was thinking about what Dr. Fanois just said about how to evaluate this. I remember when I, um, before I worked for the school district, I would go to schools and I would work with them, and then they'd say, you have to fill out this business partnership agreement because we have to get credit for you. And, um, I never wanted to fill it out. I always thought it was annoying. And I always think about, you know, that they were probably just filling out some metric, right? And I probably should have just filled out the paperwork. But the reality to me is I don't care how many people we engage. It's the quality of what the engagement and how they are really working with us. So maybe we could actually tie the work that they do to the other metrics on how they are actually supporting the goals that we're trying to come out with. So it's, it's not just a, we have 10 this year and we have 20 next year. It's more of a look at the quality of how these people are working with us and how we are giving them opportunities to participate and support. Because I know when you work for a nonprofit in this community, having a partnership with the school district at Palm Beach County is huge. And having the opportunity to put on your, um, you know, things that you have done, you know, look at how the school district finds us as a valuable partner means that they can raise more money for their organizations, which then gives back to us. So I think we need to really look at the quality of those partnerships and how we support them in supporting us, if that makes sense. Thanks.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So that triggered another thought. So one of the things that I hope that we improve over time, and I don't, I don't know that this is in the strategic plan at all, but is to get principals to actually kind of outline, I guess it would be their school-based strategic plan. And I don't mean the school improvement plan. I mean, the principals, like, the, paint the picture, right? Of these are, this is where I'm trying to go, this is what I need, da-da-da. And then when these community partners come, these nonprofits or whatever, that they fit into that school's plan, not just what they have, because what I have seen happen too often is well-meaning organization goes to the school and says, we, you know, we would like to do da-da-da. And the principal say, oh, that's lovely, but it's not in alignment with what they know they need. It's, it's extra stuff that is happy and nice. But if we can just get, and I think it has, I think principals need training, honestly, to, to take their vision and their dream and, and outline it. Sometimes it almost has to be line itemed so that, you know, the community members might say, well, I'll pay for, um, two children to be in the after-school program for a semester. And it's a bite-sized chunk, but, but we have to teach principals to think that way. And so, yeah, and, but, and then they can say, no, they can say, you know, that's lovely, but no, this is what I need you to provide for my school and not just accept whatever is being offered.
Yeah, I do want to caution us, right? And I guess it's because I've been hanging out with a lot of principals lately. A lot of times, this strategic plan, it seems like everything falls on the school center, right? Everything that needs to be done is dependent on the success of our principals. And I think in my conversations, trying to reassure them that the strategic plan is really also about central office, being that supportive structure they need to get everything done. And so, um, like I said, the, the principal representatives we have on the steering committee have definitely said, we want to see some things in this plan where there's a, um, a shared responsibility, right? And that's something I think the board has made loud and clear in its, um, vision statement, particularly about what our ownership is. And so I know as we go through this plan and this last theme, um, that's on the screen, really making sure that as we continue with these drafts, elevating that shared responsibility, right? Because, um, you know, the principals are really a huge lever of change. But we also have to be cognizant that sometimes we kind of say, well, this is with the principals, this is with the principals. Everything can't be with the principal, right? So what are the things that we can kind of take over and that? But I definitely hear you, Dr. Robinson.
I think some of that will be ultimately owned. I think Ms. McQuinn said earlier, our regional offices have a, we have a great opportunity there to make sure that fidelity is, is executed. So, Ms. Tierney, I'll turn it over to you.
So our next steps, really, really the next steps is focus groups, so that we regularly hear from the board regarding the importance of community feedback and communication with our community. We heard at the previous workshop, and, and we're going to, we're going to carry that theme through the strategic plan creation and the vetting of the draft goals. So there will be hundreds and hundreds and probably more of people involved in focus groups in the coming weeks. They've already started. They'll continue this weekend and throughout the next week so that we will refine these draft goals and, and, and be ready to bring something back towards the end of the summer. And I would just like to thank the board that the quality, the feedback, I thought was really outstanding. It was good food for thought, and we will take this back to the steering committee who will incorporate that feedback into the refinement process for, for the goal. So I appreciate the, the feedback and the work, and that concludes the workshop.
Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn the workshop so we can start the meeting. Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. I'll call the special meeting of the board to order. To record should reflect that all seven board members are still present, along with Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanois, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, Board Clerk Carol Bass, who I believe is in here on her day off to make sure that our Executive Secretary, who's done a wonderful job, Maria Byask, continues doing the job she's doing. So the first item on the agenda will be, we add one item added for good cause. Good P2 personnel, good cause exists for adding this item to allow employees to start in their new positions as soon as possible. Mr. Tierney, withdrawing anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'm withdrawing nothing.
Board members have pulled two items, LD2 and CAO1. Any other items board members want to pull at this time? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Brill. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Are there any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, comments?
Yes, sir. For all of our new residents in Palm Beach County, June 1st marks the beginning of the Atlantic hurricane season. While there are many, uh, while there are currently no storms approaching Florida, it's the prime of importance that we are prepared as a district. Our schools were not only built to educate students, but they also serve as a critical port in the storm for hurricane evacuees. As such, the district takes part in training exercises to coordinate school district departments and county-wide and community-wide preparedness efforts. Yesterday, the district held a hurricane tabletop exercise in which various school district departments and a representative from the county gathered here in the boardroom and discussed their roles, procedures, and responsibilities before, during, and after a severe weather event. Responsibilities include closing schools and utilizing them as shelters, providing transportation as needed for evacuees, feeding those in shelters and students and families after the storm passes, keeping parents, staff, and the entire community informed about developments and resources, providing security, maintenance support, and much more. This coordinated effort is not unlike running a city. I'm pleased to share that yesterday's drill went very well, and I am confident that our teams are prepared for, and I am confident that our teams are prepared for, for their respective roles should a hurricane impact our area this summer. I'd also like to update the board and the community about COVID-19 efforts in our schools. The district continues making great progress in our efforts to mitigate the spread of the virus. If you checked the COVID-19 dashboard recently, you will see a dramatic drop in the number of students and staff who have tested positive. In addition to our mitigation strategies, we attribute this to the fact that vaccines are readily available in Palm Beach County for adults and children 12 and older. One of the items in today's consent agenda is aimed at increasing accessibility of the vaccine for students whose parents want them to be vaccinated. I recommend that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County for vaccine point distribution. If the board approves from June through August, the Healthcare District will administer COVID-19 vaccines at four district locations, one each of our four geographic regions. The distribution centers would include the Fulton Holland Education Services Center, Safe Schools Institute, West Technical Education Center, and the Pew Center. I stress that the COVID-19 vaccine is not required for students or staff. However, it's important that it is accessible for those who wish to receive it. The district has continually updated webpage dedicated to COVID-19 vaccine locations. You can find out more at palmbeachschool.org/vaccine sites. And I want to thank the entire team to include Jay Bogus, um, and others and, and, uh, the Chief of Staff's Office. It's been a long year and I just thank you for all your work up until this point. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments at the time.
More ever comments, Ms. Ms. McQuinn? Ms. Ayala?
None.
Mrs. Whitfield? Mrs. Andrews? Or Ms. Sanders?
First of all, I'd like to thank the parents who continually, uh, send the emails about their children and the concerns about how school will look as we open in August. I've had this conversation with Dr. Fanoi. He says that we will know something soon, but parents are trying to make the decisions as to whether they're going to keep their children in the Palm Beach County School District. And they really do want to know exactly what it's going to look like and feel like for their children for the coming year. So I really want to tell them, I thank them for emailing me. Many of them I tried to email back, or Ms. Bass has actually, uh, uh, made an effort to respond to them. Uh, they're still just very concerned parents. We owe, uh, a level of communications with them because their children are our children within our Palm Beach County School District. Uh, many of them are concerned about, uh, the vaccines. Uh, that's why I pulled, uh, the MOU today because I want them to know that we're not going to ever try to do something against a parent's will. We recognize parents are in charge of their children. It's been a tough year for the parents, for the children, for all of us in this pandemic. And we must keep the communications, uh, open and transparent. Uh, I think they want to hear about the policies, the visitation policy, the student policy as we open schools up, the employee policies. Teachers are calling, they want to know what's going to happen. So we're continually getting these emails and trying to fill them and communicate to our stakeholders as best we can. But I think as a school board, we've got to make sure that we make a priority in getting this information out for everyone, especially the parents, so that they can feel comfortable as we move forward for the new school year. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson? Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Andrews, because my comments probably really fall into yours to some degree. I'm hearing the same thing. I also want to say thank you. One of the things, what, as we get closer to school opening, um, in August, um, one item that was brought up, just so that staff knows that someone asked me today, was about middle school sports. So we need to put that on our radar also. But I had a phone call this morning and the parent literally broke down crying and it reminded me that we needed to get some information. And what it was, was she wants to have her child retained. Her child's in elementary school and is not succeeding. And I said to her, you know, you just reminded me that Senator Berman's bill was passed, which allows students from kindergarten through fifth grade, um, to request retention. Um, there are certain things that we need to advise them, but it's parent choice this year only because of COVID. Um, and so if you would all allow me to, because I wanted to get this information and we're not meeting for another two weeks, I would like to ask the superintendent to let us know how we're communicating this to parents because I'm sure all of you are going to get phone calls too. It's not going to be the floodgates opening up, but there are families that are very concerned about the level that their students are at and wanting to know what they can do. So with your indulgence, I'd last, like to ask the superintendent to advise us.
Um, please correct me if I'm wrong. So the team, uh, the, the law was signed into law last week. Uh, we received it, so, um, Deputy Superintendent, his team have been working this week. So communication goes out to principals this week. Um, and then next week I will send out, uh, my communication to the broader, uh, community about it. So we're going to take this week, um, to the, the next two days and inform the principals. They will then be working on communications directly to their families and then we will follow up to the next weekend. So in that language, um, we will, we will create all of the expectations. We will create the processes by which the families can use and we'll take it from there.
I may just follow up. So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to let the parents know that they should make the request in the month of June and impress that upon them. However, if we do get any later requests, we are supposed to fulfill them? And so I, I just think it's important that we get this out because you need to know for planning, right? You're going to need to know for your classrooms, um, as soon as possible. So I appreciate the update.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's the end of our speakers from the board members. We have three agenda item speakers and they're recorded. So would Mr. Ramasar please play those recorded messages at this point?
My name is Julie Damsker. I am commenting on CAO1. I just want to say that going forward, I will comment, publicly comment on everything because I have zero trust and zero faith in our, any decisions our superintendent and school board as a whole are making. Um, you know, if you change the launch menu, I'm going to call and question what you're doing because that's how little trust I have right now. So regarding the vaccination sites, obviously you're getting major funding for this. I'd like to know where is this money going to go? And how will be the parents be able to approve it and follow it? How long will these vaccination sites be outside the school? Do you plan on moving them inside the school? You know, obviously there's a big trust issue there. Will you be bribing kids, pressuring them, bullying them like you have with the masks in order to get, to force these vaccines on them? These are my main questions and main concerns regarding the vaccinations on site. Um, Dr. Fanoi, you do need to be reminded that these are our children and you will not be forcing anything on them. Thank you.
Hello, this is Angela Salvatore. I'm calling in regards of the vaccines in our school system. I live in District 5 and vote there. I am calling to let you know that I am not in favor of vaccines being given out in the public school. I heard the, the doctor or the person who's in charge of our health, of our children, saying that our children who do not get a vaccine will be quarantined. And I just am afraid that this, and I, I knew this when I spoke at the first meeting. I've been there already twice. I have a special needs child. I don't have time to come there every board meeting. I don't get paid. I'm actually paying for everyone to have a seat. So you better start listening to our voices. I am not in favor of having our children have vaccine, vaccine sites being held at the school. This is not appropriate. It's not even a vaccine. It is a not FDA-approved experimental injection. We don't even know what the outcome is and you want to do this to our children? Not only that, the masks need to be taken off. Other schools, private schools, other school districts are allowing our children to breathe and be healthy and smile. I cannot believe what is going on in our public school system. Honestly, I'm about to give up and call private schools. In fact, that's what I'm doing today. So you need to understand, parents like myself, and there's a lot of us out there, we're done. We're about to just hang it all up and you will not have a school district because we will be gone. We will be either homeless.
Hi, my name is Katie Barnes. I'm calling in regards to the special meeting today in regards to the mobile vaccination sites, um, that you guys want to put up on our school campuses. Uh, I have a lot of concerns for this. I, um, how is it going to work without parental consent? Um, my child is very young. If he ever were to get a vaccination, I want to make sure I was right there with him. How is it going to work when other kids have the vaccinations and some don't? Are the ones that are not vaccinated are going to feel shameful? Are you guys going to try and bribe them with cookies and donuts, certain things like that to give them incentive for getting a vaccination? How long is this going to go on for? Are you guys going to try and bring it in to the schools? I, I just have a lot of concerns for this. I think that schools really need to stick with schooling our children and not bringing vaccines onto the school campuses. They're already dealing with so much this year and bringing this on, it could be confusing. There could be peer pressure, some type of bullying, more segregation. It's just worrisome to me. I'm not quite sure where the money is coming from and all the funding. Where is it going to? Like I said, just a lot of concerns. Um, I would just hope that you could hear us parents more and how we feel about this. I really don't think it's okay. I pretty much know that there is no shortage of vaccination sites in this county. I mean, they're everywhere. So if people do want to go get their vaccination, they can go do that. Or the parents can bring them to their pediatrician office where it should be done, not in the schools. Like I said, let's just leave the schools to school our kids, give them the normal childhood that they deserve. Let's leave the vaccinations out of this, out of the schools and, and move forward. So I just wanted to give my, uh, opinion on that, um, moving forward. I hope that we can get some resolution here and keep the schools, schools and the vaccinations off campuses. Thank you so much.
That's the end of our agenda item speakers. Board members, we have two items have been pulled, CAO1 and LD2. At this point, does anybody want to pull anything else before we vote on? Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. First item, Mr. Superintendent, CAO1.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding with the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County and authorize the superintendent or designated need to sign all documents and contracts related to the agreement which are required for implementation. This MOU is effective upon its execution by both the party, by both of the parties through June 30, 2022.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Ayala, and that was pulled by Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. And I pulled this because parents need to have clear communications. Uh, if this is passed tonight by this board, I think we hopefully will send something out to let the parents know. And I heard you, Dr. Fanoi, when you said that, uh, no one will be forced to take, uh, to get a vaccine. And this is something I think we've been saying from up here. But parents need to hear it because when they see something like this item with this memorandum of understanding with the Healthcare District, they, they're concerned because I think their trust level of us is not where they would like for it to be as it relates to their children. So we need to make sure that we put something out. When I look at these sites, most of them, you don't have really, uh, kids at these sites. The district right here at the district office, West Tech, you know, very few children there. The Pew Center, uh, as well as, um, Safe Schools. So we need to put something out to explain to the parents what we're doing. Uh, it's a voluntary thing. Uh, it's happening all across the state of Florida, across the United States where the sites are there to get the students as well as others to take the vaccine. So when we do something like this, it's great for us to kind of follow up with communications. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Bogus because you've been absolutely fabulous in talking to parents who've called me. I refer them to you as it relates to the Health Advisory Committee when people had so many concerns about that. And we have to just correct the information to let them know what we are doing. I think, I don't think they want to say bad things, but when they don't have the information, they utilize what they think it is. So we have to be out front and, uh, make sure that they know. This is something, this partnership with the Healthcare District, I know I've seen a lot of the vaccine pods all across Palm Beach County and heard about them across the state as well as the nation. But now that we're doing it, we need to put something out there for these parents to know that no one's going to force their child to be vaccinated at any one of these sites. It's a voluntary thing. And basically, these sites aren't really on school campuses. So the more that we do things, to change our policies, to do things like this memorandum, please follow up with some communication so people can get the information and then they can make the best judgment. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Uh, Dr. Fanoi, I was just wondering if you could address the, the issue that one of the parents mentioned, which was that we were getting paid to do these sites? I think that's a really important thing for people to understand that that's not true.
Yes, it is very true. We are not getting paid. That is not coming from the board's budget. This is all through the county and, and state and federal resources. So we are, we are just providing places for, uh, families who choose to take advantage of that. And I want to be very clear, outside of West Tech, none of those other facilities are actual schools where children will be present. And so even at West Tech, as Ms. Andrews so clearly stated, it is, it is a lot of adults there. So those four facilities are there for volunteer only. No one's making them come. And once again, there will not be any requirement from the superintendent that students must be vaccinated to come to school.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And I think this is a great opportunity to dispel some of the rumors that are out there. So maybe having a fact sheet that has the, the comment. For example, vaccines will, you know, students will have to take vaccines. And then you explain it. Another one, that students who are not vaccinated are going to be segregated. We need to clear up that rumor because there's a rumor out there that we're going to separate the students or that we're going to require that they give us that information on the front end. So I just think it's a good opportunity to, in just very clear language, to get that out there so that this way people do understand what's going on. And thank you, Jay Bogus, for what you've done with this, with this MOU. I think it's, I think it's wonderful to be able to provide the access to the students.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So yes, some of the, the misinformation was attributed to me and I find it fascinating. I think some people misunderstand intentionally. I will assume some people just misunderstand, right? So, but let me talk about two things that I remember, um, and one of them was brought up. So this, this piece about, um, segreg, um, not, I'll get to that secondly, about, um, quarantining students who have not been vaccinated. That's if you're exposed, right? So, i- i- and just like now or before vaccines were available for young people, if you were exposed and within six feet for more than 15 minutes, you were quarantined. I mean, that is the public health standard, right? And so basically, if you look at the flip side, um, Dr. Alonso said in the Health Advisory Committee meeting that if the student is vaccinated, even if they are exposed, they don't need to be quarantined. So that's what, it wasn't like, we're just going to quarantine you if you don't get the vaccine, right? But the second thing, the conversation, I like the word, they threw out the word segregation, which fascinates me. Um, so it was brought to me by a principal and I still think it's an idea worth exploring. If your master board can allow it, well, first off, all this is contingent upon, what is the viral load in the community in August, right? So it seems like we have these conversations in isolation. But that's the framework for all decision-making as far as I'm concerned. But let's say that the viral load in the community is still where at moderate risk, right? Then a principal suggested the possibility that you, if you have, for example, um, two fourth grade classrooms, one might be for kids who want to wear masks and the other for kids who don't. Of course, based on their parent choice, this is parent choice. Of course, the teacher would have to choose too. But that's what that was. They got turned into the magical word segregation. So if we're going to talk about parent choice, let's explore parent choice in a public health realm. And no one had a good answer, um, for what precautions we will need to take if the viral load in the community is still significant in August. Prayerfully, it won't be. Prayerfully, this is a moot point. But if the viral load is still, you know, at a moderate level, um, in the community in August and we're not able to do three feet, what precautions do we take? And so this concept of having masked and unmasked rooms was just a brainstormed idea, um, to answer that question. So the other thing I want to tell you is if you watched the Health Advisory Committee meeting, Dr. Andrick told us about the Indian variant, which is apparently spreading fairly rapidly in in England, and for whatever reason, it has a propensity to infect younger people and they're more sick than the original, um, virus, right? So, I mean, I'm hoping it stays on that side of the Atlantic. But there's a lot of unknowns and so, and I know we would like to be able to say what definitively is going to happen in the future, but the truth of the matter is, we don't know. And so if you watched the health advisory committee meeting, you will hear me asking the other physicians on the call if they knew of any metrics that would suggest that with three-foot social distancing, if, if the viral load was at a certain level that we would need to return the mask. That got turned into something else too. So this is what my, one of my mentors taught me. They're gonna say many bad things about you, it's your job to make sure they're not true. So those particular rumors, uh, put those to rest. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and my reason for pulling this is for us as a board. Because when we're sitting here, we are representing the entire Palm Beach County School District to explain whatever it is that people may have misinterpreted about whatever anyone has said or whatever is out there. Maybe it's not anything that we've said, but as a school board, the policies belong to us and we're the ones that sign off and vote on the policies. So this is what I tell people over and over. The, a committee is a committee, they can discuss things. But as a board, we actually can approve and we vote. And so as a result, just like this tonight, the memorandum of understanding, we've clarified that. The superintendent clarified it at the beginning. And Mr. Bogus, you've done a great job in keeping me informed, which I appreciate. And so we have to just continue working with our parents because these still are our parents. And you may feel that they have something against us, but I don't take it that way. They're fighting for their children. They're concerned about the health of their children and they're the mothers and the dads. And so I wanna listen to them and try to make sure I can explain to them what we as a board have said, what we're going to do, when we actually do it. And so much has to be done for opening up the schools. And I look forward to having the conversation with all of you as we move forward.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Brill and for the rest of the board, the exact communication you spoke to is going out in the morning. Tomorrow.
There's no further discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. LD2, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board authorize the settlement of Palm Beach County School Board versus Jacinta Larson. In accordance with the terms set forth in the settlement agreement, authorize board chair, superintendent, and general counsel sign all necessary documents.
Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by someone? Mrs. Whitfield, that was pulled by Dr. Robinson. There's no discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six one with Dr. Robinson in opposition. Last item on the agenda, Mr. Superintendent, P2.
I recommend the board approve the personnel addendum that's submitted.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.